All right, so we have, we'll go back to the thing that I already handed off, which is thank you Ted, and you have been elected, and please, you know, take over.
Thank you all for your confidence and good, good morning again. The next order of business is the election of the other officers, the two officers being the treasurer and the board secretary. As I'll remind the folks on the board, the board secretary has essentially no duties except service on the executive committee. We've received one candidate for each, the candidate for treasurer being Laura Thompson. Are there any other folks who wish to speak to, speak up at this point to offer to serve as treasurer? Seeing none, either online or in the room, Laura, would you like to speak for a few minutes?
I don't know if I have a few minutes in me, but I will speak. I would be, it would be my pleasure to serve as treasurer again for another year. It's been my honor to work with Say in her first year as CFO, and I hope I can continue to serve the board in a useful fashion.
Thanks very much. Could I ask the candidate and non-voting members of the board to step out for a moment? Thank you very much. We are back in session. The feedback of the board to you Laura is that we very much appreciate the service you have given to the board as treasurer over the past year, and we're very happy to see you stand again. And I have the permission of the board to make this appointment by acclamation, so please signify by clapping. The next order of business is to elect the board secretary. We currently have one candidate for the position, Robert Pepper. Is there anybody else who'd like to throw their hat in the ring at this time? Seeing none, may I ask that we pause the recording and ask the candidate and the non-voting members to leave the room again? Thank you very much. We're back in session. We, the board thanks Robert Pepper for his willingness to serve in this role, and I have the permission of the board to make this appointment by acclamation. Please signify that by clapping. Okay, the next order of business, which I can reassure everybody who has been getting up and down as if it was a game of Jack in the Box, that they don't have to do again for this, is to populate the various committees and other liaisons that the board is required to do. That starts with the appointment of a liaison to the ITF nominations committee. I believe the person who previously agreed to serve in this was Brian Haberman. Brian, are you still willing to serve?
I am.
Is there anybody else who'd like to put their hat in the ring at the moment? Okay, seeing none, the resolution reads, resolve, the ISOT board appoints Brian Haberman as ISOT board liaison to the ITF nominations committee for the 2022-2023 term. May I ask someone to move the motion? Barry and Laura, so Barry moves and Laura seconds. I think we can once again make this by acclamation, so please signify by clap. The next item of business is the appointment of the committee chairs and members. So this is being presented at the moment as an aggregate motion where each of the committee chairs and the... Oh, okay, thank you. It's been pointed out that I have missed the appointed trustee of the ITF trust action item. So Victor has agreed to serve in this role. Is there anybody else who'd like to volunteer at this time? Seeing none, the resolution would read, resolve that the ISOT board appoints Victor Quarsing as trustee of the ITF trust for a term of two years. May I ask someone to move the motion? Barry moves and Robert seconds. I think once again, we can make this by acclamation. Thank you very much, Victor. Thank you for catching me. I apologize. The next item of business is the appointment of the committee chairs and members. So this is being presented as sort of an omnibus motion where all of the committee chairs and committee members are listed. May I ask everybody to take a moment and look through and see if there are any suggestions which need to be adopted or any changes people wish to make to the list of committee memberships or chairs which they hold or which they believe need adjustment in any kind?
You added this note that the, some committees need to be more populated, right?
So those are the members of the committees which don't come from the Board of Trustees. So both the elections and nominations committee traditionally have members from the community, and so those are populated after this meeting. Once the committee and the chair of this, and the chair of the committee have discussed the needs of the community for who, who to draw on. Are there any questions or proposed amendments to the list of chairs and committee members as presented? Seeing none, I'd like to do this by by affirmative vote. Is first, is there anybody who objects to the list as presented? Any abstentions? Then please signify by raising your hand either in the tool or physically to signify a positive vote. Thank you very much. Mohammed, welcome. In your absence at the beginning of the meeting, Laura was reappointed treasurer, Pepper was appointed secretary, and I was reappointed chair. Okay, the next...
My congratulations to you all. So, and my apologies that I got, I started a little bit late.
No problem. The next item of business is to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting. So can you please put the minutes up, Kevin? Are there any proposed to the amendments to the minutes as presented? May I ask somebody to move their acceptance? Thank you, Luis. Any, Sagarika, thank you for a second. Any abstentions? Anyone opposed? All in favor, please raise your hand either in the tool or online. I really, I think I meant in, in person or online, otherwise, I think I just said online, two different ways. Okay, thank you very much for that. The next item of business is to welcome two new chapters. The proposed resolution here being resolved that the ISOT board of trustees warmly welcomes the interplanetary chapter of the Internet Society and the Internet Society Qatar chapter. We have also been notified that the US Colorado chapter, US Philadelphia chapter, and then Nepal chapter have recently been dechartered after unsuccessful rejuvenation attempts. And I am sure we extend our best wishes to the members in those territories for their ability to reorganize at some later date. In the meantime, may I ask someone to move the resolution to welcome the new chapters?
I move.
Thank you very much, George, and I saw Brian as a second. I think we should probably do this by acclamation. Please signify your assent by clapping.
What is the interplanetary chapter?
So are you aware of the previous interplanetary SIG? Okay, so it dates back almost 20 years. It was founded by Vince Herv and a number of his colleagues from JPL and other parts of the technical community, which is interested in extending internet technology to serve spaceflight and other long-distance applications. They've supported test systems for the DTN bundle protocols and applications over the years. When the recent reorganization of activities took place, they were not one of the special interest groups which resulted from, from that reorganization, and they decided to reform themselves as a chapter with a fairly curious geographic bound. Traditionally, the chapter, chapter geographies are a good bit smaller than interplanetary, but in these special circumstances, it worked out well, and so they have organized themselves as a chapter.
They were originally also a chapter prior to the creation of SIG.
Well, I wasn't aware of that.
Interesting. It gives a new meaning to diversity.
As far as I'm aware, all of them identify as human, however. So we cannot yet claim that there are any members of the society who do not so identify, so.
As far as I remember. As far as I remember, when you apply for a new chapter, they ask you about the languages. So have they claimed a different language, official language, Klingon or something like that?
No, the official language for the chapter is English.
Okay.
If you look at that chart, you'll see they actually do have members in all of the continents that have people on them permanently. So it's very diverse.
Okay. The next item. The next item of business is to accept a summary of agreed board action items from the 2021-2022 Board of Trustees. I'll remind the incoming board that this does not mean that you necessarily agree them. This is a handoff. It means that we have received them. And so there, it is obviously up to the ongoing Board of 2022-2023 to decide to what extent it wishes to take on these actions. But this is a mechanism by which we maintain the continuity of the board by passing the summary from one active board to the following active board. So you're welcome to discuss this at this time. But I remind you that assent to this does not mean that you accept the, the action items as, as necessarily the direction of the society, but rather that you accept that you have received them from the previous board. So the the current set listed are, continue to support the projects and activities approved as part of the Internet Society's 2022 action plan. Consider implementation of policies and procedures to increase board diversity and improve structures of consultation among the lines of those suggested in the recent open forums on governance reform. Support the evolution of the relationship of the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation as a supporting organization. Do folks have any questions or discussion? Seeing none. The resolution here reads, accept the summary of agreed board action items from the 2021-2022 Board of Trustees. Resolve, the ISOT Board of Trustees accepts the summary of agreed board action items as conveyed by the 2021-2022 Board of Trustees. Barry, or did you have a question, or were you moving? Moving, anybody second. Victor. Let's go ahead and do this by affirmative vote. Is there anybody opposed? Are there any abstentions? Please signify your assent by raising your hand either in person or in the tool. Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, the final item before the first break, and we have made startlingly good time, let me just say, is the recognition of outgoing trustees. And the purpose here is to express our appreciation to the outgoing trustees for their service to the board. The resolution reads, resolve that the board thanks Richard Barnes and Paul Ebersman at the conclusion of their terms for their dedication and outstanding service to the Internet Society as members of the Board of Trustees. The board also thanks Mike Godwin and my own, my Muna Diop, who both resigned earlier in the year. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, may I ask someone to move them over? Robert has moved, Pepper has moved, and John has seconded. I think we should do this by acclamation, so please signify your assent by clapping. We are running well ahead of time, but given, given that, I think we should probably take, go ahead and take a quick break and return at the top of the hour. That would be in 23 minutes. Time, time for two coffees. For those of us in Danha, a perfect time. For those of you in other places, please take a moment and we'll see you soon. Yeah, actually, why don't we pause it because we're still waiting on Pepper? Thanks, everybody. We're back in session, and our next item is Andrew, who will be talking to us with the status update, action plan processes, et cetera.
But it's not me because I believe Rinaldi is taking this. Sally starts?
All right, so Sally then Rinaldi. I have both of you as, as following Andrew, so it's just a quicker handoff than I was expecting, but we're very happy to have you. Please go ahead.
All right, hand it up. Okay. Good morning, afternoon, I guess morning for everyone. This is our action plan 2022 status update. The data that you'll see here is current as of the close of Q1. So obviously, an enormous amount of work has still been ongoing, and so we continue to work on all of these plans, but this is an update of where things stood as of Q1. And with special thanks to Rinaldi and her team, we've, we've worked very hard to set success measures for each of our projects and initiatives and track our progress towards those. And every year, we get better at doing that. And we're really pleased to see in Q1 how much progress we had made so far. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. We've divided our projects into two kind of groups. The first set of projects relates to growing the internet around the world, and the second set of projects is around making the internet stronger. So we'll focus first on growing the internet. This first project is deploying and growing community networks. This is our work to build connectivity around the world and local communities and to empower those communities to connect themselves. On the success measure, first success measure in 2022 was the number of existing CNs, community networks, that we helped to improve with expanded coverage or added services. Our target is seven. This is in progress. Work has begun on five of the seven deployments, and the remaining two were started in Q2. So we are on track for this one.
Can I ask you a quick question on that?
Sure.
Obviously, there's been a lot of supply chain issues around networking gear in the industry as a whole. Is that hitting these projects as well?
Not that it has been reported to me so far, but I think it's something that the team is, is paying close attention to. Because it is a barrier, and there's a lot of different barriers to getting equipment into countries, supply chain among them, but tariffs and other things as well.
Thank you. Sally, can you give us a little bit of, bit of information about what these projects are, where they are, and, and you know, because, yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, sure, not a problem. So for our existing community networks, we have work underway with community networks in Armenia, St. Vincent, Guyana, in the Anuvak region of Canada, and Bolivia, among others. For new community networks, which is the second item there, which is with 15 or more users connected, our target was three. The work is underway now with community networks in Nepal, Baluchistan, Pakistan, and Malawi. Does that give you a little bit of a sense for that? Is there more that you?
How, how are these projects or locations selected, or they volunteered, or you know, just an idea?
Yeah, I think there's a number of different ways that we do that. Sometimes it's with local chapters that have, that have identified that there's the community in their area that is ready to do this, others with partners on the ground in the regions. So it is a community-based process, rather than ISOT sort of declaring that this is a place. It is really intended to be working with the community to identify where there are gaps in connectivity, places that are underserved, and where the community is ready to take on this kind of a project.
Thank you. The, actually, before joining the board, I was leading Beyond the Net Project in Latin America for creating a map of community networks. Yes, in Mexico, the database is existing, but it's still not a graphical interface. And the idea is to later make this tool available for every region in the world to complete the whole chapter, the, the whole view of the community networks. Because there's a number of very, let's not say strange, but challenging places around the world, like the Arctic Circle or Patagonia, yes, but Georgia, which is one of the top examples. But there are very small networks, just like the 15 users in regions which are really completely isolated, if not by the internet. And that is maybe in Manaus, in the Amazons, or in the southern border of Mexico, or in Canada. Yeah, it's amazing, Canada has some isolated, very isolated places. So that, that is something that I think we should see soon, the, the result of that. And also, the regarding the community networks, I know we tend to measure our success in terms of how many networks have started running or fulfill the objectives of the project. But maybe we should start thinking about technology. Yes, because many of these networks may fall into use all technology, and others may be top-of-the-nudge technology. They may be thinking on IPV6 and 6 gigahertz band for their links. Yes, while others are using the remains of other networks. Yesterday, also, we were talking about fiber optics. So maybe it's interesting to see which sort of technology these community networks are using, because it's also a measure of evolution of the networks. Yes. Thanks.
So yes, one question target can go on to deal with today. So are, I noticed that we, you know, number of CNs that we build, is, is that the, so is the strategic target the number of installations? Is it the number of users that will be captured? Is it the captive nature of the network? Like, that, that's the one thing that goes through my mind is, what is the strategic goal? And then over year over year, if I think about like, what are, like, what are we trying to get to? Are there thresholds, milestones that we're trying to reach? Or is that out of focus from these specific plans?
One of the challenges with this topic is that there's a tendency to say, well, you know, really what you need to do is connect more people, and these are like, this is, you know, filling the Pacific Ocean one eyedropper at a time, and so this is never going to work. And I, I think that's the wrong measure for this. The, the goal really is to create evidence of, of complementary systems, because the Internet Society is far too small to really make a dent in the problem of, you know, communities that, that should be connected and aren't, or should have connectivity and don't. And, and in a lot of cases, the answer there, for instance, is not a community network. The answer is, hey, telco, put some cable in the ground, you, you know, monopoly. And, and they just don't, because, you know, that they don't think it's worth it. And, and that's actually a completely different regulatory problem, and this is not really what that's about. This is to solve the problem of cases where nobody's ever going to hook this up unless people do it themselves. And so you've got to give them the tools to do it. And so, yeah, we've been, we've been focusing on counting the number of, of networks. And we have, you know, a sort of threshold of like, you know, below which, like, you know, 15 or more users. Because below that, we're, we're thinking, well, like, that's a land. But we're, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get to a, a level where people are getting meaningful connectivity and, and able to do things, but also are able to drive it themselves and thereby demonstrate that there is this viable mechanism by which, you know, even people who are otherwise ignored by large-scale deployments have a, a means to get to the internet. And that's, that's what this is about. We're trying to, you know, foster a community of people who can support one another in doing this.
Okay, that actually makes a lot of sense. So then, as part of this, do we ever do it like a retrospective, kind of like, what was engagement look like before? And then what does it look like after? Maybe I should have done more reading. That sounds like a yes to that.
Yeah, I think one of the things the teams are really working on is, I mean, there's a, there's a role for the Internet Society, certainly. But there's also, one of the things that we can do through training, through things like case studies, through investing in kind of the business model for a community network, is enable communities to pick this up, so to speak, themselves. So that it's not just the Internet Society doing this, but that communities have the resources, that we make those resources available. So there's, I think if we go, so the unique accessing resources and content, it's not just content for the sake of it, it's about case studies, like what worked here? How long did this take? What kind of community was involved in getting it together? And then following up on that months and quarters later. So, so that's a little bit of what's behind the, the content piece. If we go to the next slide, you'll see a real focus on training here. So in, in Q1, we trained 190 people, we're launching two new courses. And again, this is the idea that people can develop the skills to, to empower themselves to build this kind of connectivity. Otherwise, it is, it's just one little network at a time. And then fundraising around community networks, Andrew mentioned this yesterday. We're very happy to get the grant from the NRC to do community network training and capacity building with indigenous communities in Canada. And the team through, at the WTDC, the World Telecom Development Conference last week, just finishing up, was part of the, the pledge for connectivity as a mechanism to try to bring more organizations into this kind of work and support the work that we're doing. So they were laying the foundation there with that pledge. Yep.
The, maybe Andrew, the, one of the things that we need to, to take as a summary of what is the impact of community networks is social benefit. Yes, the, it's very hard to measure, but if we set, let's say, quasi-quantitative form, that may be very useful to measure the things that Victor was addressing, how these things are changing in time. And also, I would like to know how P2C is going to change this panorama. Because I understand that the goal of ITU is to train about 100,000 people, yes, and develop more about 10,000 CNs. So that surely has to impact the things we do, right?
Absolutely. And so the pledge that we made was to support 100, what we call complimentary connectivity solutions, and train 10,000 people to build and maintain this infrastructure by 2025. In doing that, what we're hoping is to create a platform by which partners can come into this. In doing that, what we're hoping is to create a platform by which partners can come into this work with us. Um, and we've already received some um, early um, indications of support for that. So to say, this is where we're trying to go at a large scale, please come with us. Um, either through, you know, financial support or other ways of partnering to, to get to that result.
Do we have any sustainability plans for these community networks? Because with my experience, we have installed this. So we have, we had been training people, capacity building and so on, then later on, they, they will be drop off.
Yes, that's absolutely a concern. Um, and uh, one of the um, pieces of work that the, the team is working on this year, and actually it started last year, was looking at what are the sustainability models? Um, different kinds of models that, that communities can use successfully. We know there's no one size fits all. And so we try to be really careful about that. But again, going back to the case studies, this is what's worked, this is what hasn't worked. Um, these are the kinds of um, plans that need to be in place over the long run. Because you're right, it's not enough to just drop the technology in there. Um, you know, six months later, people have wandered off and done something else. There needs to be a sustained commitment and a model that they can work within to be successful at that.
Renalia, did you have something to ask?
So two things. We have a five-year strategy. Um, and within this, the action plan is the primary instrument for us to implement that strategy. So the things that you see on an annual basis, what we do is actually to achieve what we said in our strategy to build, promote and defend the internet. And the first one was to extend the internet to communities that need it the most. And that's where you're seeing CNs and next IXP's, et cetera. So impact is very important in relation to what Louis was talking about. We produce an, an impact report every year based on the implementation of the previous year. But in order to determine that impact and social benefit, we need time. Uh, we can't just, we, we need time to see the impact and to assess it and then be able to capture it with the human-centered stories that come with it, because that is what captures people's um, attention and heart. And that will also motivate some, them to also consider donating to the cause. Yeah, so that's what I wanted to say.
All right, we'll go on to the next slide. So again, part of this building the, the internet to the communities that need it most, um, the work that we do on fostering sustainable peering infrastructure, our work on internet exchange points has been longstanding. Um, I think as many of you know, uh, we work in two areas, uh, to establish new internet exchange points and also to support existing internet exchange points. And in both cases, we are on track. Charles, perhaps to anticipate your question, I mean, you'll see up here, um, uh, the work in Georgia and the Canary Islands really carries over from 2021. Um, none of these things happen just quickly. It takes months and months of preparation and community work in order for an IXP to be deployed and be successful. Um, and um, you'll see here as well, um, work being done on existing IXP's, Mexico, um, Rwanda, Angola, and Paraguay. Um, what the team does is they um, send out um, uh, requests with proposals to the regional IXP associations to determine um, existing IXP's that may need additional support. What's the nature of that support? And that begins a dialogue on what are their needs? What's the equipment that might be needed? What's the additional support that the Internet Society could reasonably provide in these cases? Next slide. Um, we also, it's, it's not enough, we're not just dropping IXP's in around the world. There's a, there's an actual vision for interconnection and traffic exchange um, across the globe. Um, and we know that we have partners all around the world that help make this happen. So working with IXP development organizations um, to support um, internet exchange points around the world, we have partnerships uh, with APIX, APNIC, APNIC Foundation, EuroIX, et cetera, so that we can work together to really build a community that supports these IXP's as they develop and grow. Um, we're also working very closely with uh, regional internet exchange point associations um, to support a general vision of enabling fifty percent of internet traffic to be locally accessible by 2025. Um, these are conversations that are ongoing. And again, if we can do this as a community, um, we can have a much bigger impact. And that's, um, that's the thinking here. Next slide. Um, part of the work, this is a separate project, but certainly highly related to our work on internet exchange points, is our ongoing support for technical communities. We know that technical communities, whether they be network operator groups or NRENs or other um, technical organizations in the local community are the places that, that keep communities online. That's where collaboration happens, that's where training happens. Um, and so we continue to support um, the technical communities around the world um, through training, uh, the network operations and local area networks courses are very popular and well-attended. Um, and we continue to try to um, bring people into those courses as needed. Um, and then supporting new technical communities. Um, in Q1, we focused on identifying where those might be, where the needs might be the greatest. And over the remainder of the year, we'll be looking to, to build and support additional local communities as, as um, the needs are expressed. Next slide. Measuring the internet. This is um, the work we do to try to present to the world um, a, a perspective on the, on the health of the internet, so to speak. Um, we have a tool called Pulse, um, which is where we try to track um, data and using a number of partner data sources to present a picture to the world about the internet. Um, we started in the area of shutdowns, as you'll recall, and last year, um, launched the internet um, resiliency index in Africa. And that's something that this year we're um, hoping to expand globally. Um, interestingly, I mean, as I think you all know, world events um, over uh, in Q1 um, created quite a bit of interest in the kind of um, data and presentation that, that the Internet Society um, offers. And so you see that represented here in the numbers. Um, we actually had a general goal going into 2021 to improve the visibility of this tool, to spend a lot more time and effort on taking it to the next level and really making it a, a place that people um, could find accurate information about the internet. As it turns out, the first quarter um, of the year gave us um, uh, presented a need, obviously, in the world for this kind of information. And you see that, um, there was a lot of effort on, you know, fifteen blog posts published um, right around the time of the Ukraine-Russia situation. And also there was um, issues in Yemen and in India. So there's, there's unfortunately, a lot of activity in the internet um, that uh, is showcased on that, on that tool. So you're, you're seeing a lot more increase in engagement, which is something that we're really proud of and hoping to build on this year.
Just a quick question. Um, that, and you kind of, kind of answered the end there by saying that there was events that kind of helped. Is one of the, when, when targets are created, um, how sensitive, like, the forecasting models we use to say, what does success look like? Um, I just noticed there's a, there's a lot of variability between the achievements. And that's, it's probably okay. But like, is that forecasting model based on some kind of objective way of figuring out, well, we can go up by this percentage? Or we can get this number of things? And I understand this, this is really hard. And I'm not, I'm not trying not to be, you know, overly uh, I don't know, forget the word I'm supposed to use there. But anyway, the point that you get, you get where I'm going at. Like, how do we figure out, was the target good? Was it just our ability to get an achievement? Was it the wrong target? Do we change the way we forecast what the target should be? Just trying to understand strategically how we look at that typically.
So, um, not to put too fine a point on it, the Internet Society has not always been super good at this. And um, uh, over the last few years, uh, I think things have become quite a bit more disciplined about this. So, um, uh, when I was first being interviewed by the board, um, there was this question that was put to me about, you know, how, how would you measure this? And um, and it, it became obvious to me that this is something that was, that was a weakness. And we really needed to, we needed to, to work hard on it. Developing that skill within an organization of the scope of the Internet Society takes time. And I think what you see are, the, the fact that we were at this point is a, a suggestion that we, we've now got the basis on which, on which that accuracy um, can get better over time. Uh, last year, um, uh, you, you'll have to go back to the recording, because I'm not, I don't have the presentation here handy. But um, uh, last year, we, we had some things where we reported, you know, exceeding goals by like a hundred and fifty percent in some cases. It's like, okay, well, great, you made an estimate, you um, really exceeded it. That means that the next time your estimate needs to get tighter. Um, uh, and so, you know, I think we've been seeing that, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to pretend that that work is done. What, what we've been trying to do, however, uh, in addition, is to get the, uh, get the targets to be sharper. So the, the, the early targets were, were like fairly broad, because you want to, you want to learn to hit something first. Um, but as we get, uh, as, as we get better at that, I, you know, we want the targets to be more finely grained. And then um, that greater granularity gives us a, a theory of, of why these things are. When we're producing um, this, and this is all part of the internal discussion, I, you know, I don't really imagine that the board wants to be involved in this level of discussion. But when we're, um, when we're doing it, we have a lot of, a lot of internal discussion about, uh, okay, how does this thing advance the, the story of the five-year targets, right? So, you know, how does this show that we, and, and, and we'll be talking about that tomorrow, I, I think it is, um, about how we develop that and so on. So I, I think maybe there'll be more information forthcoming uh, on that particular topic of how that develops that will be more satisfying to you.
Yeah, and just for clarity, I was less concerned about, I wasn't trying to say this, trying to get the sausage making for the algorithm. It's more like, what kind of algorithm should we have? And what should it look like? So I was look, just looking at it from a strategic.
So we'll, we'll definitely have that conversation. Um, I, I, I think it's tomorrow.
Sorry, before you go ahead, the uh, regarding the, the results from Pulse, do we have some uh, traffic measures? How people are going into make use of that information? Or we are just broadcasting information and we have no feedback from that? Because I have read some eh, not reports, but the uh, maybe blog posts when they, where they make use of the Pulse information as a reference. So I may understand that is being very useful, especially when the Ukraine-Russia conflict started. People went over there and got some information about the, the, the status of the internet around there. But the uh, I, I'm, I'm not sure, and I do not remember if there is a continuing monitoring operation of how Pulse is used.
Yeah, I, that's something that the team, um, I was actually looking in the notes for um, the remainder of the year. Um, they, they want to dig into those numbers. They did a little bit of that last year. Um, you'll see, I think if we go to the next slide, you'll see a little bit of the media mentions, so you see where Pulse is being referenced. Um, and they would like to see those numbers, I think, be much higher. They would like more um, aggressive use of, of that um, of, of the tool going forward. They'd like to see people referencing it. That's ultimately the goal. So yes, digging into that, understanding the audience for this, doing that kind of audience research so that we're producing something that is in fact useful um, is, is where we're trying to go with this.
When we say media mentions, that is global?
Yes.
Very, very, very small.
Go ahead. Um, our media mention target for the year is a thousand. And we met it by the end of Q1 because of the SplinterNet campaign situation in Europe, essentially. And this contributes to it, but there are other things that, yeah.
On data partnerships, um, this was a big focus for the group in 2021. Um, they um, secured over twenty data partners. This year, um, the focus is on really refining the platform, utilizing that data. Um, and they did sign, we signed a um, MOU with the University of West Indies on internet resilience in order, again, to take the African internet resiliency work and, and work on it on a global scale. So um, that uh, the, the team feels good that we are on track for this one. Next slide. And can I do a time check, Ted? Okay, how much? Keep, just keep going. Okay, let's keep going until someone tells me to stop. Um, understanding low earth uh, orbit satellites, this work here was really to, um, in 2022, to develop a, a position of the Internet Society on this. Um, understand the relevance for our work to grow the internet. This is um, an emerging topic in internet access. And um, so this is a relatively small project. Um, as I think many of you know, they released um, the, the draft. It's in the PDP now, um, in our policy development process. So the community is taking a look at the, at the first draft of um, of the position and, and our view on it. And we'll be incorporating that feedback um, over the coming months and um, with a, with a goal. And we're on target to communicate the position to the Internet Society community.
Question that quickly. This is, this was one of the discussions we had on the email list recently. What are the expectations of the board? When like, so, you know, obviously that the draft was there, was very interesting, was good read, we had a good lively discussion. What are the expectations? Like, what would you, again, like, what is the expectation for us? Do we just give ideas? This is great? Uh, is there, I, I wasn't quite sure what the outcome was, what we were looking for there was.
So the, the board historically has wanted to be consulted on, on PDPs. But the, the policy development process um, that we have, that was adopted before I started, um, uh, ultimately makes the, the decision about whether this um, uh, whether this policy has met the community threshold and so on, makes that a staff decision. So the board is, is welcomed to provide feedback, just like other, you know, parts of the community are. Um, and the board traditionally takes an active interest in these things. Um, not every trustee, of course, but like, different trustees um, are, are more or less interested in a given topic. Different parts of the community have, uh, have different interests in this. And so, you know, we get, we get answers from, uh, from various people. We certainly appreciate the feedback. Um, and, and the staff have allocated the time. But um, if what you're asking is, like, you know, do you have to do a in-depth review for every, um, like, are, are you sort of the equivalent of an AD uh, for Internet Society PDPs? No, um, that's not expected.
And, and I'll point out that it's sometimes hard to keep your hat straight in this, right? Uh, many of us have technical interests or, or, you know, uh, policy interests around some of what's going on here. And we may provide feedback on that basis. It, if it comes to the point where you really feel the board has to get involved, because this is heading in a strategically wrong direction. And I haven't seen that myself in the, in, in the past two years. Then that would be a conversation that you'd need, you need to raise on the board. But most of this is just a, a way of giving staff feedback uh, on the progress of these. And it doesn't require board action. And as a result of it not requiring board action, you can think of it as, as, as Andrew put it, us behaving like a part of the community, a specific part of the community that happens to have a, a, a kind of a ten-thousand-foot view of, of what's going on. Makes sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I was, I was just asking this, you know, in that particular, so I felt like I was getting into the weeds and like, wait a minute, is this the right place for me to spend my time on board activities? Is it's, it's fun, but it will, or it's interesting, but it may not be where, if I have X number of hours to spend on board activities, I'm trying to figure out where should I be spending my time?
Okay. And, and, and I think the part of the question there is, is, is that really your board time? Or is that, hey, this is fun, and I, as a member of ISOC, I'm interested in providing feedback.
Yeah, I probably, yeah, maybe it's not really important. But anyway, if I'm going to spend time on cycles, because I think everyone here is pretty busy, I'm, I want to make sure, what, what brings the most value? Where should I be paying my most attention? That, that's why.
I, I think you'll find your way toward it a, after time. And uh, as, as was said already, you don't have to review each of them. So if there are ones you do want to dive into, that doesn't imply we're expecting the same for every single one.
Okay, next slide. So this set of projects is um, the work that we do to strengthen the internet around the globe. Um, this is led by Joe Hall. Okay, all right. So the first project is promoting the internet way of networking. Um, you'll know, uh, and Renalia may go over this with the strategic objectives, but one of the objectives we have is that the um, internet model is the preferred model um, around the world. And uh, this project was set up to sort of develop a tool um, to help understand whether policies are, um, the policies that are being proposed or considered are aligned with the internet model. And what does that mean? Um, and so there's a lot of work done in this project. This project wraps up in Q2. Um, so it will complete its work in the next couple of weeks. That does not mean that our commitment to this work um, stops, rather that it is, um, our goal is that this becomes infused throughout the Internet Society and becomes part of our general advocacy strategy going forward. Um, in order um, to, to wrap up its work, one of the um, the key pieces that the, the team needed to do was train, um, um, internal analysts, so staffs, staff members who could do, um, the internet impact assessments on different policies. Um, that target was fifteen, um, as of Q1, that hadn't completed, but I can tell you that there's been a lot of work in Q2 to, to bring that along. So we're confident that that, that is going to be done. Um, number of new training courses, again, this, the idea is that uh, we want to empower not just staff, but the community itself to be able to use this tool and to do that. Um, the training, uh, will enable that, and those will be, um, ready to be launched, um, in the coming weeks. Um, a number of internet impact briefs, um, those continue to be developed. Um, unfortunately, um, there are lots of interesting policy proposals always emerging around the world that, um, create imposed threats to the internet model. Um, and, um, we have found that this internet impact assessment or internet impact brief is a very good tool to develop our own analysis for what the impact of these policies would be on the internet. And then to use that as a, a basis of advocacy, um, in the markets where that policy is being developed. Um, so, uh, as the end of Q1, there were six. Um, I know that there have been several more that have been added. Um, and, you know, we really do aim to work with these, work on these with the community, um, uh, impacted. So whether that's a chapter or a local partner or whatever the case may be, um, you know, our goal over the long term is that this is not just internet society content, but that this is a tool that's actually useful, um, for policymakers. Um, and then in the long run, um, we intend to have an advocacy playbook that sits alongside um, these impact briefs. So it's not just issuing a report and then hoping everybody just absorbs it, but that there's a methodology for how you use that, um, impact brief to do appropriate advocacy. And obviously, that's different in different markets, and, you know, there's sensitivities in different places that are present and, and not in others. Um, but how can we use that, um, to, to, um, get people really thinking about when you're developing a policy related to the internet, what is the impact on the internet? And, and, and get people thinking in that, in that mindset. Um, next slide. Okay, um, sorry, my, there we go. Um, the next, uh, project in our, um, strong portfolio is related to manners. Um, this is our routing security work that's been ongoing for, um, a number of years. Uh, one of the, the big success measures, and I think the board has discussed this before, is, um, the transition um, for, for the manners community to a five oh one C six or the equivalent. Um, I'm not gonna spend too much time on that here, but, um, to tell you that management is expected to get, um, a legal, um, summary from the team very soon, and then we would expect to be coming to the board to discuss this with you. Probably, um, at the, after the end of this month is, is what, is what our plan is. I think Alona knows that sound. That sounds correct.
Victor, do you have a question?
Yes, um, so it sounds like there will be a discussion at some point around this, presumably. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm interested in that, because I have two hats, the board hat and an operator hat, and this is, so, very interesting as well.
Okay. The traps.
Yes, I'm actually also very interested in how to, you know, the, all, all the way from your presentation about community, the CNS, all the way through to, you know, this slide, uh, how to impact, uh, you know, think about how, what the strategy would be to increase the policy impact of, of the, you know, all these work, great work that's being done. You know, media, media part of it, maybe, the media may be part of it, you know, you, you, you get people thinking about ISO when they think about these issues. Uh, also, how to work with other, uh, in the community that are more in the area of pushing policies in different countries and, and continents and so on, how to work more closely with them, using ISO as a more technical-oriented entity with credibility that they could rely on, you know, they can talk, to go ahead and talk about more of the, of the policy or even political stuff. But, you know, for ISO, we can give them the technical credibility and so on. You know, I, 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 I would be, I would think that that is something that we should try to put some effort into developing some stronger partnership with, you know, people or organization in that community to, uh, to work together. And, and really in terms of the target, you know, start to think about how to, how to relate it to changing or improving policies.
So this is sort of music to my ears. This is my background on policy. Um, I completely agree with you, and what we find is, yes, ISOC brings that technical, um, reputation. We understand how the internet works. We are not political. We are not taking any company's position. Um, and so people can rely on that as, as a solid, um, input to the policy process. Having the local partners on the ground, sometimes that's the chapter who can rely on us to help with the technical, um, background that we might be able to provide, and they have the contacts to take that locally, and that is really impactful. And we've seen that, I think in Belgium, we see it in, um, Brazil. I mean, there's a many markets where this has worked extremely well. And you'll really see that in the encryption project. Because, um, part of the recognition there is that it, this is a big threat. There is a threat around the world to end-to-end encryption. The internet society by itself cannot, um, uh, prevent that from happening. What we can do through a coalition is work with partners who are well-placed, as you said, sometimes to do the advocacy directly, sometimes to rely on us, sometimes to come together. So, I mean, what you're saying is, is absolutely correct. It's not enough to just issue a report. You have to be able to do something with it and walk it all the way out to impact.
Mohammed?
Yes, uh, thank you for this one presentation. So I actually have two points. First, a quick question. Uh, when you mentioned that, uh, there was, uh, in, impact assessment, there was a, uh, media mentions count. Uh, does this count include positive versus, uh, negative mentions? Or it's just, uh, count that, uh, these numbers need to be achieved? And if there is some sort of, uh, negative, uh, media attention that internet society actions get, uh, what is the, uh, visual policy of the internet society? How do we counter that kind of?
So the question I think that Mohammed had, I'm gonna ask Renalia here, is the media mentions, we, you said about a thousand. Is it, do we track whether it's positive or negative media attention? And what do we do as a response?
Yeah. Yes, we do look at the sentiment on whether it is positive or negative. Um, and usually our communications team will look at the negative aspects of it and develop a response by pushing out more positive-oriented messaging and positioning either staff or influential community members to make the, or contribute the messaging. Does that answer your question, Mohammed?
Yes, uh, a follow-up would be that the thousand number count that you mentioned, uh, does this include, and you mentioned that you have achieved this by the end of first quarter. Does this all of thousand include the positive number count? Or were there some, uh, kind of negative attention as well?
Um, I think it includes all of them because any attention is good attention because it gives us an opportunity to go out then, respond to the negative ones and ride on the positive ones and create more.
Okay, uh, second, uh, is just a comment, and it does not need, uh, any response at this time. Uh, but with, with regards to internet disruptions, uh, in many of the areas, as internet society impact assessment, uh, toolkit, uh, it, it, uh, mentions and it counts. Uh, it would be prudent to, uh, see the impact that it has on communities and in, in those areas. If I give one example, would be, uh, the people with disabilities in certain areas. For instance, if there was, uh, an internet disruption in XYZ or some area, people with disability would, uh, sometime have the only communication channel that would be the internet. For instance, for people with physical disabilities, for vision disabilities, and for even people with, uh, speech impairment. Uh, internet sometimes is the only communication tool that they use to communicate with their family, friends, as well as, uh, in the community. So when this tool is taken from the people, uh, it disrupts their lives, uh, sometimes even more than people without disabilities. So, uh, my feedback would be that if impact assessment, uh, includes stories rather, uh, from, from these areas, this may carry more impact, and it may, it may include more value to the tool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. That's valuable. Okay, um, so let's move on from manners then. Next slide. And, uh, next slide. Okay, um, I mentioned this already, but this is the work that we do on extending encryption. Um, and, you know, Charles, I think to your point, uh, ISOC can't do it alone. Um, the encryption coalition is something I think we're particularly proud of, um, in growing the number of organizations that are both, uh, committed, um, willing to put resources, time, and, uh, local expertise into, into the cause of defending encryption around the world. Um, we had a target of four hundred, um, new coalition members. Um, uh, the Q1 actuals are two hundred and seventy-five, so we're well on our way, um, to achieving that. Um, and the added nineteen in Q1. Um, I think it's important, uh, the note here, um, fifty-six percent of these organizations are in the global south. And really focusing in Q2 on, um, looking at specific segments that are particularly at risk when encryption is, is threatened or undermined. And so working with those kinds of communities, um, LGBTQ or domestic violence survivors, women, et cetera, to really try to focus the message um, about the, the real-life impacts of, um, threats to encryption. And the coalition is a way of doing that, of extending our reach. Next, oh, yep.
And what, what are they doing? Has it outreach? Um, what, what is the action?
So those, the coalition, um, actually has a lot of, of dialogue together where they track the threats and then mobilize together for action. So, um, if the threat is particularly local, um, a local community can then depend on this global coalition to help them develop, whether it's talking points or a strategy, or bring partners together, or organize an event. I mean, there's, it means that you're not alone as a small community organizer in a country that you actually have a global community around you. And so there's a lot of organizing that's done together, um, comparing notes, um, reusing, I mean, some talking points never fail and are, you know, applicable across multiple markets. And so that's what they do together is to try to, um, pool their resources essentially.
So Sally.
We have a, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Um, quick question, i- is, is there something that the board can do in, in helping you with that recruitment process?
I think that if the board wants to help, we will always welcome it. Um, I would be happy, um, to facilitate conversations with any board members that want to, to speak to the team working on this. Um, growing that coalition, refining the message really is, is critical. I think that was something that we said at the early outset of this, that, um, the message on the other side can be very, um, impactful sometimes and pull at the heartstrings, so to speak, and really getting the message, getting a global community together that's, that's, um, committed to this. Um, anybody who wants to help is, is, we are welcome. We welcome that.
Great, thanks, Sally.
Well, I, I'm on the mailing list, so I see all the messages all the time, some good work going on there about, you know, certain, for example, like you mentioned, some local law or, or, you know, issues. And then you get, you give them the feeling that there's a whole global community behind them, and if they want to get a, together a statement, you got people from all around the world supporting them and so on. Now, my question is, uh, how much are we trying to also engage our own chapters to do this? Because some of the chapters may not have so much of a focus on these policies before, but they might have a very good understanding about what's really going on locally. Or maybe the other way around, if they are not just contributing to some of the messages, they will be very helpful in getting the messages out to the local communities as well. So, I, I, I mean, when you talk about all these, uh, engagement numbers and so on, I, I don't know whether it's right or wrong, but I get the feeling that it might be more about other organizations that are outside of ISOC. But are we also talking about our own chapters as well at the same time?
Absolutely. Um, we, there's been, and I, I pulled the numbers, um, after lunch, but, um, if you go back to Global Encryption Day last year, a large number of the events that were held around Global Encryption Day were, were really driven by our chapters. Um, if you look at the work more recently in the UK Online Harms Act, the, the UK chapter has been at the forefront of that. I think that's true in Germany and, and true in, in Belgium and, and around the world. And where, as you say, where they may not have the, the skill sets or the interest yet, and they're, they're learning about this, then that's where the training comes in. And there's, we've done a lot of work with Joyce's team to offer training and talking points, whatever we can do, because fundamentally, you're, you're right. The people on the ground are the ones who are gonna have the most impact with their local policymakers. So I would say chapters are at the top of the list. Um, and the more that we can get them engaged, I think the more powerful our message is going to be. Renalia?
As of today, as I see the statistics, the forty-one chapters are involved in the encryption project out of a hundred and twenty-four.
How many are you, Renalia?
Forty.
So that of the chapters, right?
Sally, why don't you?
Okay, uh, next slide. We're almost done. Um, let's see, so these are the number of advocacy, um, activities. Again, Charles, to your point, um, organized by the, the coalition and/or the ISOC community. Um, this is a whole range of things, you know, speaking at events, signing letters, um, reaching out. Um, and they count, they, they literally count the instances of advocacy, so, um, and, and we have to, for some of the, um, reasons that Alona explained, uh, yesterday, because this is policymaking, right? Policymaking is happening here, so, um, around the world. So we have to track this quite carefully. And you'll see, um, some of the, just in Q1, um, the work that the group, um, had done already. Um, and then this last one is, is going to be, is, is hard. Um, the number is small, number, the number is two, the number of global government entities that make statements in support of end-to-end encryption. That's not easy to get governments to say that in their out-loud voice. Um, uh, I, I have in my notes some good news on the horizon for Q2, and we think that we at least have one that's, um, uh, able to say that. Um, but this is, uh, we hope for this to culminate around Global Encryption Day. So, um, uh, that's something that, that we're working on now. So we feel good about that.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Do you have a date for the Global Encryption Day?
I have to look that up. I'll Google.
Well, just late, it's after Community Day, right? April?
No.
Really?
No, it's October.
Excellent.
Yeah. We will get that to you. How's that? It was, it'll be in October.
October?
Yeah.
Yes, after Community Day, right? That happens in September. Okay, this is a short week.
Right.
A tight week.
I don't, I don't believe it's been announced yet. The, the, the date that you saw in April was a, an open letter. That, it was a, an, an open letter that was signed up, yeah. So I, 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 I'm, I'm sure it's later this year, but I don't actually think that the, the group has, um, settled on the date. Well, it's because it came from the same channel and, on Twitter, but the, the, the part of the, I, I, I'm not sure that we want to announce in an open meeting right now exactly what the date is, because I'm pretty sure that there's a plan for how that's gonna be announced, and I'm pretty sure it's not in an open meeting, um, uh, by accident. So, um, uh, I, I mean, I think we can get to the date when we have it, but I'm not sure that we're gonna come back in this session and, and say this is what the date is.
Yeah, just the, uh, I think it's a great opportunity to bring other audiences or their communities into the ISOC, uh, at-large community, e- especially children and, um, uh, young people who get a lot of concerns about encryption. And the, uh, although it's not the main technical focus, but it's a very important social issue that everybody is aware about encryption. Thanks.
Good, thank you. All right, last slide. NDSS, this is the annual research conference that the Internet Society supports. Yay. It took place again this year as a hybrid event and was highly successful again this year. I will say the data as of this report, that the conference was in April, and so the data is still coming in for this. So we'll have better data to report for you for the next report. But the fundraising targets were exceeded for this year. And as a hybrid event, it was extremely well attended and met our expectations again, waiting for the data to come in.
I'll just add that I've been going to this for the last eight years or so, and it's a really great symposium.
Okay. We'll hand it off to Renaya.
Members need a break? No? Okay, we'll keep going. Let's go to the next slide, please. Oh, Sally, you missed one. Did yourself, yes.
That's terrible. I'm so sorry. Digital sovereignty is a project that just began in Q2. This is another smaller project on an arguably very big topic of digital sovereignty. This is an issue that is all over the world, and nobody can quite agree on what they think it means, but people are using it in lots of different ways, many of which not particularly helpful. So the plan this year is similar to Leo's. Do the research on how the term is being utilized and develop an Internet Society position or perspective on it and work that through the policy development process for the community. It's not just to do this in isolation with staff. There's a lot of conversations. They've had some excellent discussions with org members, some chapter events, and a lot of conversation going on because this is a term that's out there and probably even more present in our world now than even when we had planned this project. So this work has just started, which is why we don't have any data to report here, because it began in Q2. But the expectation is that you'll see this out in the PDP and the Q3 timeframe. Okay, now am I really done?
Okay, so I'm going to cover what we call initiatives in the action plan. Empowering people to take action is the theme. How I would define initiatives is basically the things that we do to grow internet champions around the world, more of them essentially, and to empower and enable them so that they are more effective in what they do, either by themselves, with each other, or in collaboration with staff in terms of the efforts that we initiate through the organization. So let's go to the next slide. So this initiative is about training that we provide for chapters every year. When we launched the five-year strategy, one of the concerns raised by our community is that many of the projects are extremely technical. And so what we did to support our community is to basically launch a training program, what we call fundamentals, because it's essentially fundamental information about the projects, why it exists, what problem does it address, and what we can do as a community and as ISOC to address them. And so we've been doing the training for a couple of years. And so the target for this year is to provide the training to 500 chapter members. The training is yet to take place in Q2 and Q3. And in terms of the percent of fundamentals training participants that implement an activity locally as a result of the training, the target is 20%. And for your information, last year, 2021, 73% of our chapters basically participated in projects, which means that many of them have benefited from the training itself, and 44% of organization members. Let's move to the next slide. This is about special interest groups, and I have notes on this because it's special. So special interest groups are essentially vehicles for our community members. Either they are individual members, not part of chapters, or chapter members to come together on topics that they are passionate about, connect, learn, exchange, and collaborate. And we changed our approach to six primarily for two reasons. One was that many of them were having difficulty in establishing themselves as legal entities, which means that if they cannot do so, they have trouble receiving funding. And also, they were having difficulty engaging a global community to come together on the topics that they wanted to work on. So we changed the approach and a proposal was developed by a volunteer group comprising community members working in collaboration with staff. And last year, it was presented to the board and it was approved. And so New Six, as we call it, was launched this year. And it involved basically asking our community members on what are the topics that you're interested in? And it was aggregated. It was presented back to the community and they were asked to pick the top five. And the top five became the five-six, essentially. And the topics are internet for education, online safety, internet of things, affordable internet access, and cybersecurity. In addition to the five-six, there are three standing groups, as they call it, because they have no time limitation. The others rotated out every two years based on voting of topics. And the standing groups are the ones on accessibility, youth, and gender. So these are the six. And our targets for the six this year is the number of six that have implemented more than 70% of work plan deliverables by end of year, five, and it's in progress. And also a net promoter score for the six themselves, and the target is 50. Now, in terms of, is 50 good or bad? In terms of net promoter, the scale is between minus 100 to 100. Zero is considered to be good. Above zero is considered to be good. Above 20 is considered to be very good. So 50 is generally excellent to get. Okay, next, please. Mobilizing individual members. You may know that we have more than 89,000 individual members around the world. Half of them are chapter members essentially. And our target is percentage of total membership that have an engagement score, 10%. And this success measure will establish a baseline in 2022. However, it is dependent on us having our new association management system online within the year. And I think that we may not be able to achieve this target based on progress on AMS replacement. In terms of global newsletter open rate, the non-for-profit open rate average is between 20 to 25. Our target is to achieve 26. At the moment, at the end of Q1, we've achieved 31%. In terms of tailored newsletter open rate, the target is 28%. We've achieved 60% with the newsletters focused on digital sovereignty and one other, which I can't remember. Moving on. Empowering internet advocates. This is about our fellowship program and also the alumni program, which we are developing this year. We have five fellowship programs. They are early career fellowships program, mid-career fellowships, IGF Youth Ambassadors, Manners Fellows, which is tied to the projects, and the IETF Policy Fellowship Program. So our target for number, total number of fellowship program participants for this year is 90. Q1 actuels is 15. Out of the normal five that we do, we decided not to pursue the IETF Policy Fellows this year, primarily because we've been doing them in remote mode in the past two years, and we have not been successful in getting good participation. And we think that when we can get to full face-to-face opportunity for doing this program, then we can bring it back online.
Can I ask a quick question about that? How much of the difficulty with the restarting it as in person, do you think is the structures of the places you need to send them, like IGF or the IETF? And how much is the kind of origin country restrictions, et cetera? Clearly, there's a whole bunch of the world where, you know, leaving and coming back still has fairly onerous quarantine restrictions. So the number of people you could pull from many of those countries is relatively small because the cost of attending something external would be, you know, 15 to 20 days of isolation.
Yeah.
How are you tracking that part of it? And in the hope that we can restore this next year, is there a particular measure you're looking for for what kind of epidemiological situation we would require? I mean, sorry to put it in fairly clinical terms, but is there something we can currently track there? Or is it going to be seed of the pan?
I'm looking at Andrew's face. Did you want to respond to that?
Well, sure. So there are kind of three problems here. Two of them you already touched on, and the third one is lead time. So the policy fellows at the IETF, for instance, you know, you've got to line those people up way, way in advance because, you know, you're asking somebody to come for a week and to give that up. And frequently, at a level in the government where that's difficult for them to do. And so we've really got to get them lined up way in advance. And the situation with the IETF meetings themselves is kind of tentative from meeting to meeting. So until we get past any of that, it's like essentially impossible to plan to restart this. The big thing we did discover with this program was that, you know, we tried to do it in virtual mode, and the reality is, none of those people can be in virtual mode and pay attention to this, because what ends up happening is they've got their day job. And the only way to get them out of that and get them paying attention to this is literally to pick them up and move them. And without doing that, you just can't. So until, until we get to the place where some of the exact problems that you're talking about get to a predictable level, not so much like a particular level, but really become predictable as to, you know, when a meeting's, whether a meeting's going to run, whether it's going to be face-to-face and so on. I don't, I'm very skeptical that that's going to restart next year. I just don't, I don't think that it's very likely because I don't believe that, I don't believe that governments of the world are doing good epidemiological work on this. Instead, we've just decided to, you know, not know. And I think that that's going to create continued uncertainty in how the meetings are run and so on.
Okay, and I think I agree with your analysis. If we need a year's lead time, then we would have to say, do we know now with certainty that the summer meeting of a particular organization will be in person or not? And we'd be running the odds at this point and asking people with this career, at this career level, to run the odds with this is probably not effective. So thanks for the clarification.
Luis? Yeah, just a quick question. I think there is not yet a set date for the IGF.
Yes, there is.
There is now?
It's in Addis Ababa, last week in November.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to continue. We also want to achieve a baseline for the alumni participation rate. The alumni program is a new one. A proposal is being developed. It looks pretty good the last time I looked at it. And when it's ready, if the board is interested, I can share it with the board, because I think it's it's an important program. It draws on the pool of people that have gone through our training program. So they are essentially our internet champions, and we need to nurture them more so that when they go out into the world, they have the support and resources to be effective, because that helps our cause. Next slide, please. Yes?
Sorry. Are we still keeping the stories of all the fellowships? All the guys that go into different places collected into, let's say, the website? I think they were placing some histories about these fellowships.
We have data from 2017 onwards. Before that, I don't think we can vouch for it, but yes, we have. Okay. Okay, let's go to the next slide. This is about MOUs with partner organizations, and we are constantly trying to expand our pool of partners because they bring more resources to what we can do on the ground, especially on projects. So the target for this year is to get 25 new partners. We already have 77 existing MOU partners, and we just want to add new ones. And Q1 actuals is we've gotten five of the target. Next slide, please. This is about fundraising. So we have a target for grants fundraising. The target for this year is 600,000. 230,000 of that is earmarked for empowerment activities. That means training and e-learning, as well as the fellowship and alumni program. And for Q1 actuels, the funding achieved for this is slightly above 15,000. For sponsorship fundraising, the revenue amount secured target is 390,000. And again, a certain portion of that is earmarked for empowerment activities. And Q1 actuals is 165,650. And in terms of number of sources of funding, we're always trying to expand this, which is why we track it. The target for this year is 16, and the Q1 actuals is seven. And I think that as of now, the revenue figure for grants and sponsorships have exceeded this quite significantly. I think for revenue, it's slightly over a million, but I'd like say to step in and just tell us what the figures actually are.
So the target or the figures that the fundraising team had raised or committed is over 1 million. But when I do the presentation on the financial reports, you're not going to see the quite, the big figure, just because a lot of these grants are coming in as restricted grants. And it becomes unrestricted as we work on these projects or the grants. So yes, in terms of, from the fundraising perspective, they have exceeded the target already.
Thank you, Sei. Moving on to the next slide. This is about our training and e-learning program. For this year, we are going to, or we are in the process of rolling out 14 courses. And these courses basically are in three categories. They are either oriented towards advocacy training, policy training, or technical training. An example of technical training is network operations, for example. An example of advocacy skills training are those related to the internet way of networking and learning how to develop those impact briefs, internet assessment impact briefs. And essentially, these are the targets. We are trying to achieve 10,000 people to enroll in our courses this year. For Q1 actuals is 2,000. The last time I talked to the team, I think we may be up to 6,000 to 8,000 already as of now. So we are confident that we may be able to reach this target. Percent satisfaction expressed towards our courses, the target is 92% level of satisfaction. Q1 actuals is 96%, so that's quite good. The baseline for completion rate established. The target is to achieve in establishing the baseline, and so we have that 16.5% established in last year. I actually should put up what the target was for last year to know that. I apologize for that. But one thing I want to say for e-learning program is the completion rate tend to be low from our perspective. And that's because our courses are open. And we invite the world to basically come and get exposure and training on, you know, what are the essentials of the internet? What are the policy skills that you need, technical skills, et cetera? So a lot of people come and they look around, and they may not actually complete a course. And so that's why you see this figure of 16.5%. Another baseline we want to establish through this program is percent of people who have completed a course that say that they intend to apply the knowledge and skills gained on our courses to grow and or strengthen the internet, actually contribute to our cause. So that baseline has been achieved, and Q1 actuals at 90%. Let's go to the next slide.
Actually, could I ask you to drill down just a moment for the the baseline for completion rate?
Yes.
I understand what you're saying, that because it's open and people can kind of come in and look around, that we may have people who never intended to complete, right? So that the way the structure of the course is, there may be a serious difference between those who intended to complete and have a problem, and those who didn't. And I'm wondering if there's any way to tease that apart in the future, because it seems likely that we're losing signal on maybe ways in which the training could be improved for those who did intend to complete and didn't, because that signal's kind of being swamped by the signal of people who were just looking around. And obviously, this is something where over time, you may be looking to ratchet up this from 16.5 to other things. But I'm kind of, what's the arc here? What's the intent here? Are we trying to get breadth, get everybody exposed? Because that's a very different aim from getting a lot of people complete.
We want to get people trained so that they are more knowledgeable about the internet in general. And the team is actually currently working out a way of, what's the verb, sussing out those who are serious and those who are not. And when that becomes concrete, it will be implemented in the system itself.
Okay, thank you. And one of the things I can tell you from having worked in developer relations in companies is just breaking things down a good bit so that things count as complete to folks very early on, because that really does help people get the sense of like, oh, I could actually get through this, and maybe it's worth it. And I see Mohammed has his hand up.
Yes, in addition to what you have just highlighted about the people getting enrolled in the programs Yes, Ted, in addition to what you have just highlighted about the people getting enrolled in the programs and then completing it, one example could be the barriers related to accessibility. Because if people are unable to access the content, they would not be able to complete the course. So this, I believe, is a very good suggestion that that the the staff and the people team working on the course modules would work.
Yes, thank you, Mohammed. No, so I want to emphasize that our courses are available online and offline and accessible to people with disabilities. Also, we, our learning management system will offer course content via mobile apps, which is very important for people in developing countries in particular. And all content will be mobile accessible on mobile browsers, which also make it more accessible. Okay. Let's move on. Strengthening our community connections and participation. Success measure is development of an implementation plan for the new systems or tools that were selected in 2021. This is about our AMS replacement, which is very important for our community. For so for this success measure, the target is to achieve it. We are at 75% completion by the end of Q1, but I think that we we have an implementation plan now. And the team is trying to get that done for the year. So the other success measures and targets, it's to achieve implementation of the new systems and tools as applicable according to the plan and decommission of legacy systems and tools as applicable according to the implementation plan. Not yet started because it's dependent on the new plan being rolled out essentially. Yeah.
So there is something that I I want to state here and we've previously been a little coy about this in in open sessions, but since we're in an open session now, I can state this. We have informed Member Nova that we're not going to continue that contract and that is is ending. We're replacing it with Fontiva. That is a decision that's been made. The contracts are in place and this is, this is rolling ahead. So, you know, there was uncertainty about this in the past in various open sessions. Previously, we hadn't, we hadn't disclosed this, but this is now, you know, information that you you don't have to, we don't have to pretend that it's not happening. It wasn't clear in the in the contractual situation in prior meetings. I'm I'm pleased about this. We've had a lot of community participation in selection and development and so on. We've done, I I believe, a better job than we did on the last time we undertook this. So I I think that there is a a positive development happening here. But it will take time and I, you know, I know everybody wants this to happen right away. And I I want everybody to understand that we're going to do a long, slow, careful job about this because, you know, we want to make sure that we have uninterrupted handover. And so, you know, please be patient. Because some of the folks who are doing this get the message, you know, like now, now, now. And it it just takes so, you know, it takes a certain amount of time to do any kind of operational cut over. So I appreciate the patience.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. This is the last initiative essentially. And it's a new program called the Amicus Program. The objective is to offer expertise, subject matter and technical expertise to courts. And that is to help shape legal precedent on influential cases that affect the internet essentially. If we are successful, then those will be read and adopted and followed in other jurisdictions as well. And that's where we think that it could be very influential. So the success measure is number of important presidential opportunities for Amicus briefs identified by Internet Society Amicus Council. The target is six. Q1 actuals has already exceeded that with eight. Number of Amicus briefs filed at appropriate courts of law, the target is at least two. Zero in Q1 and several have been considered but discarded because they're not the right ones. A number of other amiki that solicit our sign-on to their briefs to reach out to coordinate briefs. Target is four. It's in progress. Q1 actuals is two. And Ilona can provide more color if you would like on this program. And that is the end of my presentation.
Does, does this skirt the lines of lobbying at all or is this like how, I guess it does or doesn't? Like, how how close is this type of activity get to that world of is this lobbying or is it just basically engaging?
Yeah, it's a great question. So because we're not influencing legislation and this is judicial forum and court of law, it's not lobbying. And Amicus and the US courts, and that's why we started the US courts, are very widespread and very easy to contribute. So I was very excited that the board approved this initiative last year. So we've been working really hard on setting up the right filters so we can find the right cases because we can almost daily respond to issues that the courts get wrong sometimes. But we, because almost everything connects to internet, right? That touches on the internet. But we're being very careful to make sure that the cases that we lend our expertise in or to are the cases that are advancing our mission. And so that's why you see that we've been very careful in assessing opportunities that come our way. And we just haven't so far found the right case to contribute. But we filed an Amicus brief last year before the official Amicus program was launched.
Well, there there is one more thing I want to say about that because you're asking about quote skirting the lines of of lobbying. And I want to be very clear, we're not skirting the lines of lobbying ever. If we're doing any lobbying, we are, we've got a registry of it, we keep it, we keep track of it. But we are definitely lobbying and and you saw some other things like, for instance, in the discussion about about encryption. There are direct interactions with governments directly trying to influence what they do in in their legislation. And we are lobbying in those cases and we are keeping track of the time and money that we are spending on that because we're we're very serious about it. It it is an extremely difficult problem for us because, you know, given our status, we need to be extraordinarily careful about that. And yet, given our mission, that's an example of something where suddenly governments have become quite aggressive about producing legislation that directly affects the core of the internet. And we can't pursue our mission without engaging with that, with that, with that legislation. It's a, it's a, it, we we are, that part of the reason we made the election we did, for instance, was in order to get clarity around that. Because it became very clear a couple of years ago that governments were legislating in ways that were extraordinarily harmful to the internet and and contrary to our, to our mission. And so we need to be, we need to be prepared to undertake that. But we've got tight limits on what we can do and we're extremely conscious of that and we're keeping tight track of it.
Yeah, and and I would just add, and courts sometimes interpret the law and they may interpret it wrong. And so we have no limitations on lending our expertise to courts and making sure that the courts interpret the law or at least understand the consequences of how they interpret the law that may have on the internet. So we have no limits on that and we're excited to mature this program. I think Luis had a question.
Please.
Yes, Rinalia, as compared to the previous quarter, if we want to summarize the engagement in a thermometer, how do you feel it's steady? Are we raising engagement or it's going down? The, we know that through pandemia, we have passed through a number of different situations. And most of them are unexpected, but the the spirits were high and more or less it kept like that. But now that we're going back into these face-to-face activities and we have raised other expectations, how do you feel? Is community increasing engagement or we're still in this plateau?
I generally see plateau except when we have special things happening like SplinterNet campaign. And suddenly that mobilized the entire community to come together and participate and lead in their own local contexts and countries. So I have, because I think that the challenge of SplinterNet will continue for the rest of the year. And because we are going to deepen our focus on responses via the internet way of networking by empowering others to respond to it. So I think that we can keep up the steady beat, but to see an increase, a dramatic increase, I don't think so.
Okay. And the other thing that because of many discussions happening in the board, we may need more information about the demographics within the chapters. Do we think, do you think both Sally and Rinalia, that we have the the available resources to describe the membership in terms of demography study?
So we we can, we we are currently looking at them in terms of their regional spread. We do that, we've been doing that for a while. But what we want to do through the engagement score establishment is to determine which cluster is most active across a certain range of activity. That's actually quite valuable for us to know who is really interested in a particular topic and when the right opportunity comes around to match them to that opportunity. We need the system to be in place to do that. So it's very much dependent on the AMS.
So let me, let me ask a follow-up question. Luis, were you actually thinking about demography, for example, for us to know what the gender balance is of the of the membership? Okay, so.
No, we don't.
We need an individual disaggregation level. If we want to have some sort of accuracy in what what we are stating.
So so there are three different things to say here. The first one is we can't actually require collection of that data. So understand that any data we have is voluntary and it's garbage data as a result, right? There's like, there's, it's very, very bad data. When we collect, when we collect gender balance data, a lot of people refuse to tell us. And 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 it means that we're extremely blind about about that thing. And I, and I, like, I don't believe that, like, any number is better than no number. It's just false. This, this, this is a place where we are, we we can be badly misled by bad data. And I I want us to be very clear about that because there isn't any way, but but there isn't any way we can require it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure of that. But the, any data that you have and you're aware about uncertainty, then it's a valuable data if you know the uncertainty limits for those.
If we could know the uncertainty limits, we would be able to backwards calculate that thing because it's a two-value system, right? But, but well, maybe it's a four-value system, but in any case, it's it's not very many values. The, the the basic problem that we have here, however, is that it's, it's the the bias in the non-disclosure disclosure data is an unknown bias. And it's very, very hard to analyze that. And and I, so we do not have the capability to get the underlying data. We can't afford to do the kind of analysis that would be necessary in order to make that reliable.
But sorry, Laura, but we 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 have location, geography, we have age approximately. No?
We're not allowed to ask those things. It's against the law in some jurisdictions to ask.
Yeah, but the, well, on gender, well, we're blind.
I mean, I think, I think we have some indications, but I I don't want us to believe, I don't want us to be misled into the idea that we're going to get anything like the kind of certainty that would be necessary in order to answer some of the questions that I think you're referring to. Because, you know, I, you know, I know people really want that pony, but like, I I do too, but I'm sorry, ponies are not on offer.
Well, the, what I at least would like is to compare as the figures published by the IETF. Yes, and those figures are published on the attendance to the last sessions of IETF. They they have made a, let's say, accurate statistical estimate of the IETF population.
We have been living on. The IETF has an optional question in your registration of what your gender identification is. And we, not everybody fills it out. You don't know if people are telling you the truth. I mean, you you just can't attest to the completeness or accuracy of that information. It's just a guess.
Yeah, but the, sorry.
That's right. It's a relevant question, which is what percentage of the data we have is preferred not to disclose, right? Because I think it's pretty high.
It's right, yeah.
A number would be useful.
That's part of the reason that I'm I'm so so anxious about this. And 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 it's, and and this is true in our community. It's more true in some chapters than others, which which like, you know, so there are, there are regional variations in this, which is also like really deeply problematic because you don't know what bias that's introducing. We have this problem also just in the staff. I mean, we have a very serious problem in the staff because our HR system requires, because a lot of governments require this. Our HR system requires that to be a binary value. That was why I said before. And 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 so we've got an optional question for staff to to offer us an additional identification. And many of, many of the staff refuse to do that and I can't, I can't require it. So even within the staff system, I've got like really bad data about this. And it's, this is something that troubles me deeply when we, some of the discussion that happened during the governance discussion, where people seem to think that this was a kind of trivial thing to answer. And it's just really hard. It's much worse. I I agree with Rinalia. It's much worse in our current system, which which also has very bad facilities for tracking a lot of this stuff. And then there is one more thing that I want to say, and that is, in the case of the chapter membership, we also don't have that kind of information because many of the chapters do not share the the data with us. Because remember, chapters are independent organizations and and we have to respect that. So there there are, like, it's not just that we've got poor data in in various ways. It's that we've got poor data in multiple dimensions. And and that's a, that's a bad place to be making statistical inferences.
Inference. Well, the, what surprises me is the IETF published an analysis of their population with a statistical analysis of the results, just claiming some level of uncertainty. Now, I agree with you. We have unreachable data, yes. But the, maybe if we go and ask the chapters to describe their demography of their membership, maybe we can get some more accurate data.
What what I would say is once we have the tools in place, like once, for instance, we have replaced the AMS, I I am totally prepared to take that data as the baseline and say, okay, what's the trend on on this data? And and not make, you know, not draw conclusions about, you know, real rates about the world. But to say, okay, this is where we started. What is the trend in this data in the places where we are able to collect it? That is a reasonable thing to do. And as long as you don't, as long as you don't think that that's giving you a picture of the world, you're fine. But I, what I don't want to do is is ever make the promise to people that we're going to have like a good picture of what our voluntary society, you know, of what its demographics are. We can't force people to give us that data. And we have plenty of positive evidence that there's a significant number of people who don't want to. And 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 we don't know why. And it's tempting to draw inferences about about what those reasons are. But I, that that, that to me is a very, very dodgy thing, no matter how how much you desire the numbers.
Now, the statistics allow us also to do sampling, right? Yes, so if we, I don't know, we're talking about universe of 87,000. So, well, let's say 90,000, yes. So maybe going into some statistical acceptable levels, maybe we're going into a sample of 1,500, which can be achievable even with the data disclosure form, yes. Because the other issue was representativeness, which will be related to geographical location. That's easy because we have disaggregated the number of members per chapter, per region, and at the end per world. Yes, because now we have to deal with other worlds, but still unpopulated. But the, so then the, I think maybe we should think on the statistics solution to this. But yes, we are somehow in the light.
So this sounds like a conversation that we we might want to revisit once we get the new AMS in, but Rinalia has another presentation for the 2023 Action Plan Process. And being mindful of time, I think we should go ahead to that.
Okay, this is a presentation about the 2023 Action Plan Process. I hope you've received it because the text is very tiny and it's possible that you really cannot read it. So first, an overview and I'll recap what I had said earlier. We have a five-year strategy. We refer to it as the path to 2025 because by the year 2025, we would like to see an indication that the internet is bigger because of what we have implemented and that it is also stronger based on the things that we've been able to do through projects primarily and through the enabling things that we do through empowering people to help us with our cause. So the strategy is centered on build, promote and defend the internet. So the strategy is centered on build, promote and defend the internet. And our primary instrument for implementing that strategy is the annual action plan. And how we resource the action plan is through the budget, the annual budget, and also the skills of our staff. All right, those three things are quite important for us. And we developed both the five year strategy and the planning process in the year 2019. And we started using them for the year 2020. So you would have seen the first action plan for the year 2020. And this is the process for next year's action plan. We always begin the year before. A few things to note about the planning process. First is that this process evolves every year because my requirement for it is that it continuously improves and incorporates lessons learned. So if there are things that we need to improve on, you will see some adjustments, but generally the flow heads towards the same direction. It ends essentially with the board approval or rejection. This process is open to all staff. It involves the entire organization because the action plan and the budget for the action plan itself is binding on the organization. So it's extremely important for all staff and it is open to all of them to participate. The second thing to note is that community input is gathered every year on priorities for the year that we're interested in for the action plan itself. In the past few years, we've done annual surveys. The responses rate is not great, but we take it anyway. And we try to supplement it by gathering input when we have regional calls or when we have face to face opportunities or any opportunity to connect with our community. And the final thing is that the Board of Trustees has some several touch points in this process. The first is that when the leadership and management team decided on the priorities for next year's action plan, you get informed about it. You have an opportunity to react. And that comes back to assess feedback. The other point when you, you get key information is when we've shortlisted the projects and initiatives for next year based on the proposals that are developed by staff after having the input from the community, is that you get a chance to take a look at that shortlist and also a chance to give us feedback. And then finally, when we've put everything together with all the details and the resourcing information, it comes to you for approval and also rejection if you don't like it. So that's essentially the process as a whole. If you see the different colors, it basically denotes the different groups of people that are involved in that process itself. So at the very top is, sorry, I have to look at my screen because it is tiny. Is the Management Steering Group, which basically makes the day to day decisions, decisions that span six months to eighteen months essentially. The following layer is the future group. It's a subset of the leadership team that is tasked to look after the sustainability and relevance of ISOC. So it's looking at the future of ISOC itself and it looks at proposals with that lens. The third group is basically the senior experts. These are our technical experts. They are the most senior in the organization. We task them to look at trends about the internet. How is the internet evolving? What are the emerging technological trends? And what should we prioritize based on the frame of the five year strategy itself? And the next one is basically all staff. They can propose any project based on the priority that we say we wanted to achieve our five year strategy. Following that is the Southeast quadrant leaders. These are the team leaders that report to me. Essentially, they provide the support and enabling services that enable projects and other things to be successful for ISOC. And then we have staff submitting proposals, the community that provide input, the finance group under say, who basically make sure that we develop the budget that gets tabled to you at the end of the year. And then, of course, the board in light gray at the bottom. If you want me to go through the flow itself in detail, I can do that, but that is the overview. And I hope that you've had a chance to look at it and I'm happy to, to address any questions that you may have.
Where are we now in this process?
We are at past fourteen June, where the Management Steering Group has decided on the 2023 priorities. And these priorities are coming to you next week formally via email.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So I, I have to say that continuing to manage or continuous improvement in the face of the volatility over the past three years has been quite challenging and we certainly appreciate your efforts. I mean, the number of unexpected mass events from the pandemic to a new mass refugee event, et cetera, has been very high and finding ways to incorporate those understandings as they've gone through, both on the foundation side and, and inside ISOC has been really impressive, but something where I start to think about what the systemic version of that is. How do we recognize those and, and make sure that the flexibility you have is appropriate to the volatility that you're dealing with? I don't really have a suggestion of how to do that concretely at the moment. You could kind of do it kind of baseline way with something like an index, but I think it's something that we need to think about as it looks like we're going to continue to have a fair amount of volatility in in the parts of the world that, that we need to affect with our mission. And so definitely, as you, as you think about this process and continue to improve it, it would be useful if you think about how the volatility you have to deal with is impacting both your timelines and your need for flexibility. So that the board can support you in responding quickly and appropriately when we do see the kinds of events that, that require responses that we don't get a year's lead time on. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And tomorrow, when Andrew presents the midterm status of the five year strategy, that will be an opportunity for the board to engage on the substance of it. And also to talk a little bit more about what are the patterns that you may be seeing around the world that may require some adjustments. And then if that's clear, then I can accommodate that in, in process. But thank you for, for their input. I think that we need one more year cycle to, on the process side, to see whether or not we can stabilize it just from the organization's side, because we have a change that's coming up. But beyond that, I'm looking forward to the discussion tomorrow. Thank you, Ted.
Luis?
Yes, and I agree with you, Ted. The, it, it's a success being able to be stable on their current situation and keeping this plateau level. Yes, you cannot grow in such an uncertainty. And we have been able to keep steady. Yes, but the, it's also this volatility, as you described, the chance to imagine a future, a, a different future. For many of the programs we have, maybe the fellowships have to be rethought also as events are changing. But also is the chance to say, well, let's restart and imagine a different sort of fellowship that satisfies either the needs of society and the needs of participants. Yes, but you need, for that, you need, for that exercise, you need a view of the whole. How do we imagine communities and the engagement and staff and all the, all the people you described in this process? How do you imagine them in the short and midterm future? Thank you.
Ted, I think what would be ideal, we had this discussion possibly a year ago. And I had said that once we have the results of the midterm strategy, that's an opportunity for the board to give us feedback on any course correction or adjustment that we need to have. So I think it begins, begins tomorrow, but thank you for that feedback, Luis.
Thank you. And we can certainly make substantive suggestions for course corrections based on what we're seeing in the world right now. But I think what we're also seeing is the, the rate of changes is much higher than we might have predicted, right? And that's hard to give a course correction around, but it might be something where we can give flexibility to staff to make sure that they can course correct quickly enough to react. And so we, we can certainly respond quickly if, if asked a specific question. You know, do we need to quickly set up a program for the pandemic, which the foundation did amazingly quickly? Is there something where a refugee response needs to, to happen quickly? But there's also something where the flexibility that we can say, look, we recognize the volunteer volatility in general. And therefore, we're going to expect a deviation from the action plan relevant to the volatility. And, you know, you can't throw it out if, if, if the volatility doesn't justify that. But if we do have a new mass scale event that does justify it, we want to be able to give the flexibility to do the right thing for the mission without kind of hewing to the action plan that was made before the circumstances changed. But exactly how to structure that is not something I can really lay out today, but it is something that as you think about process and particularly how you want to, to think about it after this midterm report, it might be useful to, to, to bring to the board because, you know, we see market volatility. We see geographic volatility in terms of the current situation in, in Ukraine. And we, we see a lot of other things that are, are not looking like the next year or two are going to be smooth sailing. And so.
We appreciate the flexibility orientation and giving us freedom to respond to relevance and need. Thank you, Ted.
Well, thank you to both of you for the presentations today. I think we're, we're ready to, to take a break now. It's eight minutes before the hour and we have our lunch break from now until the top of the following hour, which would be one o'clock here in Dnipro. So.
And that is opening a closed session.
Yep. For those of you who are observing, that will open in, that session will be a closed session to receive financial reports. So after that, we'll come back to open session.
Reopening at ten to thirteen fifty local time.
Thirteen fifty local time for the open to observer sessions to begin again. Thank you and see the board in about an hour and see the observers at thirteen fifty. In open session now, the next thing on the agenda is the board meeting dates and locations for the 2022 retreat and 2023 meetings. There is a proposed resolution here. The resolution is to approve those dates. It says, resolve that the board approves the following dates for the 2022 board retreat and 2023 meetings and provided that it is safe and practical to meet and travel in the following locations. To clarify, that means we are firm on the, on the dates and the locations will depend on conditions as we get closer to the, the time of the proposed meetings. For the 2022 retreat, the proposed time is the twenty first through the twenty third of September in Europe with the specific place to be determined. For the 2023 Q1 meeting, it would be the first and second of April, which will be co-located with the IETF. The location for that IETF has not yet been announced. For the 2023 Annual General Meeting will be the sixteenth of eight through the eighteenth of June in Washington DC. Co-located with the ICAN meeting. And for the 2023 Q4 meeting will be the eleventh and twelfth in Prague, once again co-located with the IETF. May I ask somebody to move the motion? Barry and Luis? Are there, we'll do this by affirmative vote. Are there any objections? Are there any abstentions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, either in the online tool or in person. Okay, thank you very much. The motion has passed and these are set as our upcoming dates. Thank you very much. The next item of business will be to receive a report from the IETF LLC Chair. Has the chair joined us at this point?
He has not, Ted. I do not have Jason with us yet.
Okay, well, please go ahead, Captain.
I was just to say we're a bit ahead of schedule.
True. We will then pause the recording for just a moment while we wait for him to become available and then resume when he is. The report.
Okay, great. Thanks. Appreciate it. Let me figure out how to present something here. There we go. Okay. I cannot start screen sharing while someone else is screen sharing.
Oh, let, let me stop. Try again, Jason.
All right. All right, how's that? You seeing a seeing a presentation?
It's not yet in presentation mode. So if you could put it into presentation mode, that would be handy.
Yeah, let's see. I almost never do this with with preview. Where the heck is presentation mode?
Would be view, view full screen.
Yeah, you had it a second ago, Jason. I saw that right there at the bottom. There's slideshow and then.
Oh, got it, got it. Yeah, then. Sorry about that. There's so many many things over my screen here. All right. Thanks, everybody. My name is Jason Lovinggood. I am the LLC Board Chair. And these are the folks that serve in the board right now. I don't know. We're going through slowly and we back up. These are the folks that currently serve on the board and sorry, I'm just moving some windows around. And have been on the board other than Lars, who's new as the IETF Chair. The rest of us have been on since the beginning of the board. All right, and why it's being here. All right. So next up, these are the staff members. So this is a mix of, you know, full time equivalent folks and staffers. So JD Lee, Greg Wood have been both around for a little while. Lee Berkeley Shaw, recent hire to focus on development, which is really fundraising. And Kesar and Nick focused on all of our technical, you know, debt and sort of development needs that we've got that the community can't be. So just as background, because I know that you have some new folks that are joining the ISOC board. The, forgive us, this, back and forth here. The IASA is basically the Internet Administrative Support Activity. And it was put into place originally in, in two thousand and five. And so it went for quite a while and the community felt, you know, probably starting around twenty sixteen that we just needed. It was in need of a revision. And, and that was something that was undertaken. The contract with the internet society was in twenty eighteen. The RFCs surrounding it followed, you know, either twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. And one of the key objectives was for the IETF to achieve significant independence from the internet society. And, you know, per the RFC eighty seven twelve here, operated arms length. Whereas before, there was a great intermingling of staff and folks were sort of, you know, wearing both hats, so to speak. And it ended up being not just confusing, but, you know, a problem for both organizations in terms of productivity and focus and so on. In twenty twenty one, we were required under the initial terms of the agreement and then under the IETF RFCs as well to perform basically a retrospective, a look back to see what were the, the key objectives that were laid out and where those objectives met. And then, of course, you know, should we make any course corrections? And sixty one of those sixty three were achieved or on track to be achieved and two were yellow. One pertained to the IETF's technical environment, which is part of why we've hired a couple of contractors to help us in that regard. And then the second was developing a sustainable funding model. You know, which is in part about differentiating beyond just the internet society's contributions. And so that justified the other hire that we've made. And of course, if you've not read it, definitely take a look at the operating agreement that we have in place for the new members. It's very short and easy to understand. So the one thing that I, I think we wanted to cover here today, especially as new folks join is that, you know, with new staff joining, not just at the LLC, but also at the internet society, we want to make sure, and of course, new board members, we want to make sure that we have a mutual understanding about the existing agreements and the, the relationship. And I think we've had some And I think we've had some concerns lately. We've worked on some potential changes to antitrust policies to match, you know, the current risk environment and we've taken, you know, a lot of a lot of advice from council, not just our regular council, but from other councils. And, you know, there seem to have been a high degree of questions there than there would have been in the past. Similarly, our OFAC compliance policy. We've seen instances of communications directly from ISOC to some of our staff and contractors. Which was unusual and surprised us. We didn't have a heads up to some of those things. And then, you know, I've been asked about clarifying things like shared services for HR benefits that we assume would go on for some sometime and so on. And then just some other, you know, governments related issues pertaining to the board. And so, you know, I sort of raised those issues to say, you know, things have been going pretty well lately, but maybe as a result of recent changes with some of the staff, you know, we've noticed some you know, things that would cause us to question that arms length agreement and and that may just be a fact of folks getting up to speed, getting the history of some of the relationships here. And then just for folks reference, this is also in the the ISOC ITF agreement. We've got a bunch of obligations to ISOC and I would encourage you to read them. And then, you know, if ISOC believes that we're deficient on any of those, there's a bunch of steps that are laid out. And, you know, also important to read and understand, the key is that, you know, if there are substantive disagreements. And let's use, you know, OFAC compliance or antitrust policy or something like this. You know, there's a sort of a method to go through a cure and review process. And 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 try to work through those issues. So that's it. I'd love to have any discussion. You know, I tried to be very high level in this in this part.
Thanks very much for bringing the matters to the attention of the board. It probably would be good if you put your issue slide back up for just a moment. Thanks. So I just wanted to to first of all, you know, say, obviously, the operating agreement that was put in place is still in place. Our understanding of the the current situation is that, you know, the ITF LLC is still expected to behave with an independent board and its board is responsible for the administration of the ITF. And just like the ITF LLC is arms length from the standards process, we are arms length from from the ITF LLC. The one thing I will say is there are certain things that you being a disregarded entity of ISOC necessarily require us to coordinate on. And a great example of this is fundraising and we were talking about this some time ago, you have your own fundraiser. Lee Lee Berkeley, I've chatted with her in her role. And the fundraising you do has an impact on ISOC. Obviously, funds you bring in counts toward ISOC's nine ninety and they they impact how ISOC presents its its fundraising situation to to the IRS and to the other authorities. So we do need some methods for working with folks like Lee Berkeley to make sure that if there are donations coming in, that they're structured in ways that benefit both the ITF LLC and ISOC's maintaining its five oh one C three status appropriately. So there's, there's definitely moments there where we do not need in any way, shape or form to direct the activities, but where the coordination is valuable. And understanding how you would like us to do that coordination is certainly something that we can, we can discuss, but for for certain topics like that one, the public support test is is something where we are, we are functionally one organization from the point of view of IRS understanding of our relationship and we have to be a little bit more coordinated than fully at arms length for topics like that. And I just want to make sure that you understand that it's no intention on our part to to direct the affairs of the ITF LLC and the administration of the ITF. But there are those topics where we have to be aware that the external legal constructs or IRS constructs treat us as the same body and for those we do need coordination.
Yeah, absolutely agree. I think this, you know, goes into other areas where, you know, to use an example, you know, we're working with our accountants who have a contract with us. And they get a contact from an ISOC person who asks them for reports directly or directs them in some aspects of their work. And ISOC doesn't have an agreement with them and, you know, we have a confidentiality agreement as well with the contractor. And so, you know, it's it's stuff like that where we want to make sure it's very clear that like, you know, if we have a contractor, you know, and you've got questions about, say, a financial report or whatever, you can send those to us. We'll work with our contractor employee to get them and so on. But you know, it's just sort of one example, but yes, totally agree. A high degree of coordination is is absolutely appropriate. And, you know, we're committed to ensure that ISOC passes the public support test and has whatever documents they need for IRS or other compliance.
We really appreciate it. And obviously, many of these are detailed elements of it, making sure we agree on the specifics of what accounting standards we're going to use for audits. For example, this is coordination we also need to do with PIR. And that kind of thing, if you would, you know, want us to make sure that questions like that always pass through Jay, for example, that's that's certainly something that I I believe Andrew would have no problem agreeing to. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, so the particular example here appears to have just been a miscommunication where, you know, there was an attempt to try to expedite some stuff that I guess the accounting contractor hadn't been informed that there were some questions coming. And so, you know, I have regular chats with Jay and he raised it with me and I raised it. And as far as I know, we solved that.
Yep. So I I think from our point of view, obviously, the the board doesn't get involved in in the in the accounting standards beyond the finance committees, making sure that the audit audits are are well received and the same is true for many of the other committees. We see the point of coordination from staff to staff being Andrew and and Jay.
Yeah, that's appropriate. Yeah.
Okay. So Louise, did you
Yes, I will just like to stress out the importance of consistency. As we saw it in the audit committee report, yes, the we need to work in consistency in every part of ISOC. So we follow the same standards and follow the we get the same good results.
Are there other discussions folks would like to have with Jason or Jason? Are there other points you want to raise to the board?
No, I think that's all.
Okay, well, let me thank you again for the the presentation and if there continue to be any of these coordination issues. The 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 board believes that Andrew is the right touch point for those and please work with Andrew or have Jay work with Andrew on on those. And if if that has any issues, please do raise it again, but that's or for the, I believe that covers the issues you presented here.
Sure.
Correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. And just one last note, you know, the ITF has a meeting coming up the and maybe six weeks or so, the end of July, it's our second hybrid meeting. This one will be in Philadelphia and so far both in-person participation and online participation is trending very nicely. So we're expecting another good hybrid meeting.
That's great to hear. Do you know by any chance when you expect to announce the the location of the Q one meeting of next year, noting that it's not announced now, but just wondering if there's a timing you're expecting to announce it.
We had hoped to have it be some time ago. If I'm remembering correctly, is an Asian location, which has proven very difficult to negotiate with. And for a period of time during sort of COVID lockdown, they weren't really doing much in the way of communications with folks that were trying to book from outside countries because of uncertainty about what the national regulations may be for entry. We are down to some very, very small issues around catering and some other sorts of things in relation to rooms and so on. But we're very close and we think that the attendees will be very pleased with the location.
Thank you very much for that update. I I mentioned it because in the 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 session just before you joined, we were approving the the locations of the upcoming meetings of the the of the board. And in addition to this year, meeting after the ITF in London, it's now our plan to meet in conjunction with the ITF for Q one as well.
Okay, got it.
Thank you again for for your time.
Thank you. Take care. Bye bye.
Bye. Okay, the next item of business is to receive a visit and some discussion, have some discussion with a a local chapter leader who I believe is unfortunately stuck in traffic, so we will pause for a moment again while we try and sort out whether we need to adjust the the schedule or just wait a few moments. So if you could pause the recording. Welcome back, everybody. We're here at this point to receive our guest, Ruben Brave, from the local Netherlands chapter. And to listen to his report or his discussion.
Thank you Ted for introducing me. I thank you all actually for your attention and the opportunity for me to speak here on behalf of the the Dutch Internet Chapter. And of course, I would like to congratulate on behalf of the Dutch Internet Chapter, the new trustees board members. Can I just, okay. I thought I needed to press it. Thank you. Yes, I'm also to share here with you that I've been at the Internet Chapter since two thousand and nineteen. And I was a general general board member and I really like what we do at the Dutch Chapter. It's a very active chapter. Fields of interest are disinformation, misinformation, but also advising ministries through cyber diplomacy, how they can enhance their policy with regards to internet governance. So personally, I collaborate a lot with ministries of economic affairs, foreign affairs and interior affairs. My background is I'm a what they call a serial tech entrepreneur. Sounds a bit dangerous these days, but it basically means that I've set up a lot of mostly tech companies. Some of them for private organizations, also for corporates, large corporates, such as the National ISP in the Netherlands. I was allowed to be instrumental in setting up the first draft for the fifty thousand members. And I've also been involved at board level at several Dutch organizations with regards to sports or leisure. And currently I'm involved in what they call diversity and inclusion in the Netherlands. So I collaborate with the Ministry of Economic Affairs to make the Dutch startup ecosystem more diverse and inclusive. Yeah, through what I said before, we are a very active chapter. We have a lot of fun actually at the chapter. And we like our subscription to the mission of the Internet Society, which is provide a safe and trustworthy internet for the benefit of, yeah, everybody on this planet, actually. And yeah, this brings me to the two matters that I've put on the agenda actually, because we also believe at the Dutch chapter that it's important to practice what you preach. So we've been involved as a chapter as an organizational activity for organizational development in helping individual members to follow up on procedures that seem clear at Internet Society. So one of them is actually setting up a chapter, a new chapter. It's a quite straightforward process, actually. And the other thing concerned the setup of so-called special interest group. So we have been, yeah, we followed up actually all the procedures concerning the setup of a special interest group. But we still till date don't have any re clarification why this original procedure was not followed up. We have gotten, of course, information from the officers that we were in contact with. And yeah, they had a explanation that they were reviewing of Internet Society's reviewing the chapter, this special interest formation process and they had clear reasons to to do so. But we have been, yeah, what I said before, we're a very active chapter. We are volunteers. A lot of them, people who work for us are volunteers. But I would like to make room also for the interpretation that volunteering is is also valuable work. Because a lot of, you know, people who are involved at board level at the chapter are internet professionals. They work at high hourly rates and they really like spending their time and donating actually their time to to the chapter of Internet Society Netherlands. We are of course aware that the Internet Chapter, the Netherlands is a separate identity of is an independent entity of is, yeah, is not connected to Internet Society. So we are aware of it, but it also means that when we look at the contract that we have as a chapter with Internet Society. We do have some question marks when it concerns the support that's leave it's under article three or four. Support that is, yeah, said to be provided by Internet Society Netherlands concerning organizational development. So so that there are two capacities, actually, of course, individual members for which the chapter and special interest group process are designed for, actually, we can, we can read that and as the process is formulated. But it's it's also another capacity that as a chapter, you have a relationship with Internet Society, a formal relationship. And that is formulated also in, yeah, so, you know, support provision from Internet Society. And both these from both these capacities, we see some issue issues with regards to the follow-up of code of conduct. Also for individual Internet Society members, assuming that officers who are involved in these processes are also Internet Society members, but also there's a code of conduct for board members and officers for Internet Society. And these entail things like fair and I call it fair and honest treatment. Well, you know, probably better than I do. But we 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 feel that these codes of conduct have not been followed up. And yeah, concerning the specifics, yeah, of course, you can ask any questions, of course, if there are any questions, but I would do like to raise these question because if Internet Society's mission is to provide a safe and trustworthy internet. The question for me is then, of course, how is it possible if in the collaboration with Internet Society itself, these principles are probably at least from our perspective, at these incidents not being followed.
So so let me back up a little bit to the first item, because I think you were first talking about the set of mechanisms by which chapters and SIGs were approved. And and ask a clarifying question. Clearly, you already are a chapter. Was there a movement inside the Netherlands chapter to set up a new chapter as well? Or was it a, sorry?
The the so the the new chapter was the was the proposal for a Sounam chapter.
Okay. And so that was then brought to the regular process and where is it in the process now?
So it, from our point of view, the it turned out that there was more than one group that was working on. it turned out that there was more than one group that was working on on setting up a chapter there and they were not communicating with one another. Or they didn't know about one another or something. And we attempted to to bridge this, but there were some miscommunications during that time. And in particular, there were some some correspondences that were forwarded that turned out to create tension among the groups. And much of this, as nearly as we can tell, has to do with, you know, sort of wider geopolitical context and historical context that I don't think we can do anything about. But it was our understanding that the two groups that were working on this agreed on the final application, which included people from both of the groups that had been originally working on this. Now, once the once the joint, once that final application was shared according to the standard process that we have, which is what a new when a new chapter comes in, it is shared with the rest of the chapters for comment and so on. That was the moment at which we heard that it appeared that there was not actual agreement. And that clearly there was a problem there. And so we we had to go back and and reconfirm that all of the all of the people who were listed were in fact supporters. And this ultimately ended up being, you know, causing some people to say, no, no, I never supported that and so on. Finally, there there weren't other concerns raised from from the chapter community. And this the chapter was chartered on the first of March, 2022.
So just just to confirm my understanding there, the people who raised the issues on the chapter list were from chapter leaders from from other chapters were there were members of the the different sets of proponents.
Well, the different sets of proponents included chapter leaders from from other chapters that were not the proposed chapter.
I see. And so from your perspective, this process included a number of potential issues, one of which was that the people weren't being contacted to confirm that they were willing to to serve as proponents. And so some of them did not believe that they were being listed as proponents appropriately.
I I think that's the case. I I mean, I think there were, from our point of view, there were there was some interpersonal conflict among the various people who were involved in this that created some tension. There there were there was some language that was infelicitous, shall we say, on a few occasions that I think we wanted to, you know, smooth over. I think we did learn about some some of the some of the internal staff handling of some of these things that, you know, we could sand smooth some of the processes there. And I think that there there have been some some reviews of some of the internal processes in order to in order to make, you know, confirmatory links at the appropriate time. And, you know, some care in in drafting announcements and communications that I think I think some, you know, I think we we didn't, we didn't handle all of the balls perfectly within the staff. And I think we did some review of that. But I also think that, you know, there is always some difficulty in community processes when there are some internal, you know, there are competition across the community. And some of that was exposed in this. There there were, you know, there were, there were differences in the community. And it's always challenging to, you know, to do work in public the way we do at the Internet Society. When you've got, you know, some potentially deep disagreements about how things are going to work. And I think that some of the history here, though it is not as happy as we would like, was was really exposing, you know, some divisions within the community. And that isn't something that we can magically fix.
Okay, Ruben, you mentioned as well as SIG process.
Yep.
Do you want to to tell us what the SIG was and what the issue was?
Yeah, so the SIG was a SIG focused on, oh, it's on still. It's focused on this and misinformation and also using the internet protocol that was at least facilitated by Internet Society in the Netherlands, the annotation protocols. So just like additional layer on the web where you're able to annotate on words, sentences or paragraphs. And this annotation layer, this this part of this internet infrastructure, we also use to guide editors-in-chief of mainstream media to provide them quality indicators of the information on their on their news media. For this, we used a method of crowdsourcing, of curated crowdsourcing to find people who are domain expert in a certain field or through tests have proven to have some level of critical thinking. So that we're we know that these annotations have a certain quality level. But of course, to scale this up, we saw the opportunity to collaborate with some individual members to enable a special interest group to be, yeah, formed. And yeah, yeah, in hindsight, maybe the same processes have been have been there also active. So it was not clear to us why the our application was stalled. There was the gate, there was, we were given notice that Internet Society was working on a new formation process of that that we knew. Only when we we were not involved in the creation of this new special interest formation process. And when we saw the final outcome, actually, of the special interest group formation process, the new one, we saw that it would not fit the formation of the disinformation chapter of disinformation SIG that we that we envisioned. Basically, it meant the death of the of the SIG. We did have a sort of plan B, of course, to have a working group in the chapter. But that creates all kinds of legal aspects concerning accountability for the present board members, because a working group is not a separate entity. You cannot create a separate entity of the working group. So that would be very complex for us, actually. But it's it's a working group now and a lot of renowned knowledge institutes are involved. There are like 600 annotators of, I believe, one third is curated. So again, it's a mystery to us why because we already had created this application, why it was not created as was possible, of course, then.
So let me just make sure I understand the timeline. So it sounds like the SIG was informally organized and and operating and presented a document for recognition right around the time the process was changing. Is that?
That's right. So so we got the application for the new SIG in November 2019. And that was the time when we'd already paused acceptance of or or creation of new SIGs while we were working on the new process. And there were exchanges back and forth from December to March 2020 about about why this was paused, because because we were doing the new thing. The we did try, you know, some other things because we knew that new SIGs were all paused to come during this period. And and it was, it was taking a long time to to build the new the new SIG approach because we had a community working group that was sorting out what the new rules were going to be for how SIGs were going to be operated and so on. And that that took as you all know, it's it's taken quite a long time. I mean, we're we're only just really getting it into place now. So I I mean, I do think it's unfortunate that you know, that these two processes collided. I can't say I'm delighted at the length of time that it took us to get the SIG issues sorted out. The the reason, just to remind everybody, the reason we were trying to do that was because the prior arrangement for SIGs was also really deeply unstable because it required like SIGs, you could sort of think of SIGs as being kind of parallel to chapters under the under the previous arrangement. And the difficulty was that whereas chapters, generally speaking, have a geographic scope and therefore an obvious jurisdiction under which they exist. The SIGs were supposed to be global and in the absence of a global government, it became difficult to understand where a SIG would be located. This tended to mean that SIGs did not have bank accounts all of the time or else they did. They frequently had them under the aegis of some other chapter. And this tended to to be a very, very awkward solution. Many SIGs were unhappy with it. And that's why we kicked off the the new thing. So I am sorry that these that these two processes collided with one another. And it I know that it was unsatisfying experience for you. But that is the reason why it went that way.
So just to clarify one other thing, the other part of this was, of course, the limitation in the number.
Yes, because the way that the SIGs, well, it's the limitation in in number and the community selection mechanism. But, you know, because the community ultimately selects which ones are going to be supported. The the reason for the limitation in number is is a practical one. We only have so many staff and because these all have to be functionally, you know, delivered as part of the Internet Society's activities. You can think of SIGs as having roughly the same functional relationship to the Internet Society that the I E T F used to. That it's really an organized activity of the Internet Society and the Internet Society does all of the, you know, contracting and financing and so on. And that's that's a very different model from the way SIGs used to work. And and it's certainly true that changing this horse, you know, kind of midstream made it especially awkward for anybody who was trying to create a SIG at the time. And and I, you know, I I can't do anything but apologize for that because it was a collision.
And it and it sounds like in particular, once the the process was complete, you looked at it and said, now this doesn't match what we want to do because this isn't an organized activity of ISOC through staff. It's an organized activity of a particular chapter.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
It 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 sounds like almost creating a second chapter with this mission, but still geographically limited to the Netherlands would be another way of approaching the problem. Is that something you and your leadership have considered?
Yes, we have considered that, of course, and we are still considering it. Again, also, the the special interest activities were part of the organizational development of the Dutch chapter. So we were looking forward to collaborating with the special interest group. But also, you know, we're now talking about it in two minutes or something like that. But I would like to emphasize that this process maybe took more than a year or something like that. And we were kept on a string all this time. We have partners also as Internet Society that are serious partners. What I said before, they were serious knowledge institute, serious journalists also helping us to create this special interest group. So again, you know, I I we see these two, these two capacities as individual members who want to create initiatives. Either it be a special interest group or a special interest of a chapter or a special interest group. And the activities, bless you, and the activities we have as a chapter that strengthen our position in the Netherlands to provide activities in line with Internet Society mission and Internet Society business plan. Having said that, also, we looked at the business plan of Internet Society and the last version we could find was of 2016 or something like that. We see that there's
Are you looking at the action plans for the?
No, business plan, because the contract of the chapter refers to a business plan, not to an action plan. The action plan is, of course, a extension of policy of Internet Society, but the distinction between policy and business plan is clearly being made in this chapter agreement. So for us, it's 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 very unclear. Also, when we looked into the bylaws of Internet Society, we couldn't find a specification of a special interest group, the chapters we did, but not from special interest group. So we were puzzled how, you know, we we what I said before, we invest our time and professionalism and our network in setting up activities in line with our contract, actually, with Internet Society. But then, when it comes to the part of well, maybe it's not only about deliverance, but also about transparency, actually. Then we are kept in the dark. If if it was like, you know, Ruben, we would love to support your chapter, but at the current time, we don't have the capacity or you know, then we know what to how to handle also our interests, our national interests also. So the lack of transparency is something that we see that we that we are worried about. Let's let's put it like that. And we would like to address this. And of course, this is just a verbal introduction to the to the matters, but we would like to follow up. Yeah, written version where you have a structured timeline also of the events. But this is the the summary of the two things that we would like to address. And what I said before, we yeah, we support, of course, the Internet Society and its mission wholeheartedly and professionally also. But we do think that it's important as an organization that stands for a trustworthy internet that, yeah, practice what you preach should be a very important principle.
Please.
Yes, thanks, Ruben, for coming today. And the I try to understand the when you say about contract, is the MOU?
I don't know what this is. In in Dutch, we have it's called charter agreement, I believe. So it's as a
Okay, it's the charter of the chapter, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, which it comes with an MOU with
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yes, because at the very beginning of your conversation, you you speak about the chapter as a very distancing related to the rest of ISOC and all the chapters are a very important part for ISOC. That takes me to the the this issue you were discussing about the Suriname chapter and yes, but you said also something very important, which is you're working in diversity and inclusion.
Yeah.
Yes, that's very important to share with other chapters because we know Netherlands is a country that has a lot of experience in that area, also in in peace, in in works toward peace. So that may be shared with other chapters. So that brings me in one of two things I want to ask. The first one, because we we can speak a lot about the bad things, but there are a lot of good things to be told. So what will be the great story of the the Netherlands chapter? Yes, that's one thing. And the other thing is, I'm very worried when you say that that there was some breach of the code of conduct. So if you want to be a little bit more specific to see if we can suggest something to prevent that happening, because it's not nice that anyone at ISOC is breaching the code of conduct.
Yeah, I can imagine that. So the first point was why I spoke so remotely about the chapter, actually. When I look at the charter agreement, I see point six, there is a specific article that said chapter independence. So the chapters operate as an independent identity with the sole authority over chapters, activities, governance, membership funding and and other matters. So this is the reason I I did it. But of course, we feel involved with everything that's happening in Internet Society because we're also humans and we talk to people in the in the community. But what this what I also meant that, you know, the these these two things, both the SIG and the chapter formation are, as we look at it, at the process, are designed to facilitate individual members. But it doesn't exclude the possibility that individuals members can collaborate with a chapter as part of the organizational development of the chapter. So, yeah, what would be the greatest achievement of the of the chapter? That's, I think, you know, there's a minimum requirement for chapters to be like, to have like one mission-related activity. But already, I think we are at 10 or something like that. But I think that one of the things that we did was was quite invisible, actually, was influence the director general in the Netherlands to at least reconsider not shutting down the to at least reconsider not shutting down the content coming from from, yeah, from entities that they don't like. So that was that that was something that that played, that was relevant during the Ukraine-Russia conflict or war, you define it. But we were able to to have a seat at the table there. And, yeah, we find it very important to provide the insights of, you know, the the Internet way of working to also policymakers.
And Mohammed, you have a question?
Thanks, Dad.
Mohammed, you want to type your your intervention if you're having trouble?
For the record, so.
I I'm sorry, Mohammed, whatever codec you're using is not not handling the packet loss. It's it's really impossible to hear you. So if you could, if you could type it. Oh, we've lost him. Are there other questions for Ruben or discussion? Charles?
So Ruben, what can we do now? What do you want to, how do you want to take it forward or any other options to resolve? I mean, right, I mean, I mean, you you've heard what Andrew has said. What what do you think you want to do or you what can be done for those chapter and the what the SIG?
Well, one of the issues we had was one of the issues we we had related also to communication with the officers. So the the communication just was at a certain point non-existent anymore, even though we tried to make contact and we made contact, I mean, but we didn't get any answers. So for us, it's important that someone maybe from the board or someone from another organ within the Internet Society can get the parties back at the table. So because we want to continue the activities as foreseen because they are relevant for our chapter. And to see if there can be a practical solution that fits the the possibilities of Internet Society itself and also suits the interest of Internet Society Netherlands. Because I don't believe, because, you know, it was a quite straightforward process. I don't believe that it should be a real issue. I don't believe that when it concerns chapters, there is exclusivity, for instance. And, yeah, to just really look at a practical solution to resolve this matter. So actually get a third person at the table to solve this.
So it sounds like you, as in prep for that, were planning on creating a document to to send to the board?
Yes.
So you have an anticipation of when you might want to send that?
Well, it's the holiday starting and so I have to be, but yeah, I think that in the beginning of August, September, of mid mid-August, September, we could provide a, yeah, a document that, yeah, shows all the timeline, all the, all the, yeah.
Yeah.
We can provide, yeah.
Okay, you you're certainly welcome to send it to the board chair. Email this to my attention and I'll write it from there.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions for Ruben? I I haven't seen anything. Kevin, is there anything in the in the chat from Mohammed on the on the Zoom chat?
No, there's no, no, no question typed in from Mohammed.
Mohammed, we can see you again. Do you want to try one last time?
Yes, Dad, am I audible now?
Yes.
Yes, please go ahead.
The Netherlands chapters and their administration for for joining us today. And on the SIG part, I just is and was a frustrating situation for you yourselves following the bylaws because these are as regards to SIG working group, I happen to be
So I apologize, Mohammed, we've we've lost you again. And it it sounds like even when we do have you, you're quite seriously garbled. So if if you could send your intervention by by chat, that would be a bit better. So Ruben, we'll we'll forward to you his intervention once, once, once we get it. But let me thank you again for for taking the time to come and talk to us today and to raise these issues. We appreciate you, both the dedication of your chapter to the mission and to improving the functioning of the Internet Society.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Nice for the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is receiving a report from the CHAC. And I believe Frederick, you're on on with us now.
Yes, exactly. Thank you very much for the invitation. Do you heard me correctly?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So normally it should be Pierre Jean-Denis here to to present this report, but he has healthy issues. And we have just prepared a small report to you on the work and topics of the Chapter Advisory Council steering committee. And go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so we we have worked on four main tracks, we do focus and then list all the topics we are also busy with. The first one is the ITU United Nations discussions. We want to build a framework to engage chapters through the Chapter Advisory Council. That's first project. I will detail all of these afterwards. The second one is interpretation within working committees. It is a request we have received from Eduardo Diaz. And we have translated in how to engage a broader community. Next up in them is the digital sovereignty, to enable chapters to be used with local and regional governments. And finally, a chapter survey, we are focused on on the what chapters are willing to do rather than than how to do, and that was already done in in the past. So we can go to the the first topic and the next slide. I think I can even move forward myself. Oh, yeah, exactly. So a framework to engage chapters to chapter advisory council. So what's the status first? We have a very good collaboration, notably through Elizabeth Oliuk and and the whole ISO staff team. The Chapter Advisory Council steering committee, OMAC and CHOC and some chapter leaders who participate to the WTSA recently, a few months ago. Very good work has been produced by ISO staff and and all associated people, including two reports I mentioned here, the issue matrix, one of April and and one really the the latest dates. These issues metrics are really, really complete and a really excellent work, but a heavy and and complex work. So for example, for the first one, there are seventy-seven issues reported and and going in in many directions and and topics like radio controlled device or encryption or IP addressing and and many other internet-related issues. And this also quite complex for for chapters, that's observation to onboard. When you have such big work, how to onboard in in the ITU or United Nations discussions and how to approach local governments. So we have built an action plan together, that's also work in progress. The first thing is to increase the national government's understanding of Internet Society priorities. That's really the the first point and the the first key objective we want to reach together with the the chapters. The second one is to increase government supportive of the open globally connected internet, so that they have really an active participation. And and the latest one is information sharing with OMAC and and chapters and ISO staff, of course. So that that's the action plan i- in short. With the question how to involve more governments and and chapters and how to onboard them, it's the next slide. We we have just summarized the the proposal. We can go to next, any chapter. Yeah, thank you. The idea is to have for chapters who didn't onboard yet, start an onboarding process with a few topics. The topics are not final, it's a a few months of proposal. It's ID to focus on keep some key topics that will be easier for chapters to onboard and not seventy-seven topics at the same time. The first one is is internet. Especially with the the, how to say that to be politically correct for the international situation with Ukraine and Russia. So they are really request to 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 isolate some part of the internet and to split internet. That's a a first approach. The second one is digital sovereignty, that would be approached very differently depending on the countries. In my own country, for example, it's through data retention. The government is asking to to capture all metadata like IP addresses, geolocalization and the identity of the people and and provide it to governmental requests only for, in in my case. So digital sovereignty is is a topic coming in in many countries now where each country want to decide about internet in in this area and and not matching with the internet way of networking, of course. Encryption is another example of topic, how to protect. And we are talking here about end-to-end encryption over the internet. And this is a proposal we need to, yeah, to to approach chapters and to come with those three topics. That's chapters could approach local governments and institutions to to start and engage discussions. Of course, in some areas you have the the main issue is more the access to internet because the internet coverage is is poor, the internet connections are quite bad. And that could be a a another approach for those concerned countries. That's the ID of the onboarding. And for chapters already engaged, we have a lot of things, I just mentioned a few, with the internet way of working, issue of matrix. And we can use the full internet pearls, et cetera. And and that's really the the approach here. I have chapters onboard in top three to put local governments, an alternative for countries with poor internet coverage. And and from there, define dashboards and KPIs. It's a proposal, like, for example, in each country was a situation, what are the challenge? And what could we present threats to to internet model from the legislation of the upcoming legislation in some countries? And then to with this dashboard, to see what's its participation of the chapter and to really have more chapters involved in in this process. And and when chapters are involved and when we we have a vision, also what's the status? Does the government have a good understanding and are they supportive? Yes. That's a, that's the ID. And we 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 still need to define then with ISO staff the support model, like, do we need to set up working committees on on this topic and the chat support and 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 all that stuff? That's a proposal in a chain. I propose for this topic, if you have questions to to raise your questions now before moving to the next topic.
Are there any questions from the board? Luis?
Yes, thank you, Charles, for the for your report on these issues.
So he's got several things he's going to go through. This is just the first of the of the projects he wanted to
Yeah, I just want to know if the, from the chapters, how they are participating in this process? If there's a lot of participation or it's just how about the 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 percentage of participation?
Yeah, the the percentage is is further low. And so the the that's why we we come now with the onboarding approach to help more chapters to onboard. For example, for digital sovereignty, the status last Tuesday was eight chapters and and SIG having provided inputs. It it's it's not, it's not much. And and of course, even to to participate to WTSA meetings, it was even even lower. It was more people already engaged through the through the actions with local governments. That's that's at the same time part of Internet Society. But it's, yeah, it's 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 too low. And and so that's why if we have a dashboard and KPI and that's the proposal, then we can really see in full objectivity, how many chapters, which chapters and engage an action plan. That's
Thank you, please go on.
Yeah, it answer your question, no? Other question, no? Yeah, the the next topic, interpretation within the working committees, how to engage a broader committee is the way we have translated in the Chapter Advisory Council steering committee. I will not read the the full text here, it's just for information. The original request we have received and it was more from late in America where it was observed that a few people are contributing to Internet Society compared to the the mass of people available and 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 with knowledge. And we did it with the request how to improve that. So to to the next slide, if you can go to next slide, yeah, we have the, what's the the status and the work done? We have, our approach is always to start from the what, what's the objective? Because live translation is more a way of doing things, but to do what? If we do live translation in everything, like now, for example, in in this current meeting, in 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 six languages, okay. What's the added value? So we have more restarted broader discussion to be with Eduardo Diaz on first understand what are working committees? And the definition is any committee created by Internet Society globally and asking participation to volunteers. As example, we have the special interest groups, but we can be also not topic. A digital sovereignty, it can be one. In the past, there was a working working committee about the the batch, for example, for the different chapters. Those are examples. And the objective is to engage a broader committee and not only English-speaking people or people able to 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 speak fluently in in English. And so the status is a note in preparation to be translated, of course, and sent to chapters for feedback. And in the next slide, I highlight the 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 content of this note. So first, the objective, engage non-English-speaking committees, which committees? Here we have seen, depending on on the chapters, different approach, everything needs to be translated, it should be part of our DNA. Or only privately ones, when it really it serves the more the 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 community. For example, if we have the special interest groups for gender equity, yeah, could be with live translation interpretation for this special interest group. The options, how to do it? The best is live interpretation, doing working committees when possible, as we are doing with the committee weeks, for example. Or or other topics like internet fundamentals trainings, that's of course the best. But at Minima and the quality of of software, of technology is improving, is to have live transcription and live translation with automated tools. That could be available to people. Good idea maybe to invest in the future in this kind of of technology. And what we do in any case is the translation of supporting documents. If there are working committees with live translation, but the invitation was only in English. If they are working committees with live translation, but the invitation was only in English, it's useless. The supporting document needs to be translated. There were also some questions from chapters, how chapters can benefit that, for example, Spanish. Countries or Spanish speaking countries, how can they have access to tools or funding to translate? During this reflection and analysis, we have also put attention on terminology. Sometimes if we talk about M and S, for example, other things, it's too complex for people, even encryption translated in other languages. In French, for example, it's not easy, chiffage, francs, and it's really complex sometimes terminology. And we can also work on easier terminology, address more people from the global community. And which languages? We take as basis the top international languages in the world here. And we be also part of the survey to get feedback from the chapters. So this survey will be sent. In the short future and afterwards we, you with final notes with the approval and the support of as many chapters as possible.
Oh, okay. So I'm going to interrupt you just for a moment because.
Yeah, it's finished here. It's for this topic.
It's because at the beginning of meetings, we normally declare conflicts of interest. I wasn't aware that you were going to have live interpretations of the topic. I apologize, I didn't see your slides in time. And I do need to declare conflict of interest for this because I have an interest in one of the companies that does this automated tools for machine translation. So I will recuse from discussion of this topic and ask Laura, would you mind running the queue?
Okay, I think it's fair to mention this topic of interest. Are we to the next topic or feedback?
One question from Victor.
One question, if you go back a slide. So maybe I missed this nuance. So this is one of the objectives here, the engage of non-English speaking communities. Languages below include English. So is it, is it target the communities that are first language, not English? But still use English as the language by which to communicate? Or is it to communicate in those foreign languages? Like, what's, what, like, I'm just trying to rationalize the objective versus that.
From what I've heard from late in America, so they have Portuguese and Spanish widely spread. But English people cannot speak in English, could not intervene in a meeting in English. And if it's only English mandatory to participate to live meetings, then you miss a big part of the community. That's, that's the message.
Okay, so if I understand it, the objective is to be able to communicate in those foreign languages.
Yes.
As a way to access those communities, get their input, et cetera.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions? Please go on.
Actually, I have one other question, but this might be a broader topic that we take off. So in the previous slide to this, there was the SIGs and I, there was a SIG question. And just from a prior conversation. I'm not sure if it's a capacity item, when, I guess it's a total number of SIGs that could be supported by ISOC in total, right? And so there has to be. Like, there has to be some selection as to what areas do that. And so when there is both community chapters that are trying to bring up SIGs. Versus things that they communicate large, make sure that they want, where does preference go? How does that, like, that selection process, like, what, is there like a qualitative thing goes in there? Because you might have community members that want to work on something that may not match what the globe, like, what the kind of the global position is. But they actually have people wanting to work on it versus, hey, we want to work on this as a global society. But now you have to go find people who want to go actually work on it. Like, is that, I mean, this may not be for this part of the discussion, but that's just one question that came out of mind based on the previous conversation. And now we're working into this one, so.
Part of internet localization projects or do you have any strategy on that? To engage the non-English speaking people? To your projects?
So yeah, didn't really catch your question, but basically if there is a. If there is a meeting is to have live translation, to enable live interpretation, to enable people. Not clearly understanding English and not able to participate in English, to be involved and to participate. And, and in which languages, but in alternative international languages as Spanish, French.
Do you develop a specific strategy for that? Or in that sense, involving non-speaking people?
But that's really first to have the input from the community, from the different chapters, on what are the priorities? I know that some and from, in my opinion, and also in the opinion of the steering committee, it's a dream. They want to have that in our DNA, so to have everything translated, as you have been, a parliament or commission are doing in twenty two languages. But that costs really a lot of money. So I think we should define priorities and that's part also of the survey that will be sent to chapters. What are the priorities? And for the priorities, not high, medium or low, it's more a ranking that we will ask. Please put your top one, top two, et cetera. And to really then come with a proposal, okay, in this area, in these areas, we see really an opportunity. For example, I'll just take a personal example, gender equity or it can be yours community. To have translation and life interpretation in other languages. And that will be the inputs I will receive from chapters.
In the interest of time, if you may wish to move on.
It's answer your question. We can also connect offline if you want, really, it's to present topic and welcome to.
Yeah, we better communicate offline, I guess.
Really, that would be excellent. Digital sovereignty, it's for the two next topics, we say only a few, a few things because it just started. It's a next big priority. Again, in our steering committee, we'll take the lead on this. And the objective is to enable chapters to liaise with local and regional governments. And it's there that we make also the link between digital sovereignty and the ITU or United Nations discussions. On internet way of networking, that could be one of the three topics. A chapter survey. Yeah, it's a survey we sent shortly, that was seen in the hands of Pierre Jean Daresse. You can go to the next slide, we give the status. It's really to get the priorities of the chapters, to know if they have other key topics that they would like to have addressed by internet society. And it's not part of the action plan, to know their interest in organizing some workshop webinars, working committees with internet society. And in which domains, language that should be supported, so linking to the previous topic. And what would help chapters to be more involved with internet society, global community? That's really the, in a nutshell, the content of the survey. We have an advanced draft to be translated and sent and that's in the hands of Pierre Jean Daresse. And we see internally given the conditions, how to manage that in the two coming months. We will not send, we do not intend to send that in July or August because our people will be on holiday and we expect less questions or less answers. But we would like to have the input before or jointly with the internet community week that will be in September. We can go to two next slides. Yeah, and even next slide, here are the topics we are working on for your information. So the committee week, early of September, a full chapter, every council calls and the communication. And, and then also selection of chapter volunteers for the Board of Trustees, election nomination committee. Committee and the same for the chapter, every so it's council, it's in committee for next year. And that's what was the, all the topics and the status we wanted to share with you today.
Thank you very much. Questions, Luis?
I will share your microphone next, Charles. I have a, I have this concern. The chapters. Let's say they complained, but they, it's not an actual complaint, it's just some kind of worry. That they need to communicate with the other parts in the organization, especially the Board of Trustees. So then the, we find in the middle the check, right? And then the. The check was designed for other things, right? The to help to organize the chapters, to let's say, standardize the way they, they, they. They do business in accordance to the, to the charter, the common practices, back, sharing best practices. But the, I just want to know if the check is able to have or act as. This communication channel or the check should think in other ways. That the chapters may communicate to the other parts in the organization. Yes, so that is the question. If the check, do you think is ready to act as a communication channel? Or should be thinking how to enable this communication that the chapters say they are in it? Thank you.
Yeah, a good question, but I think there is a really strong and good communication from ISOC staff. Made to the different chapters. The purpose here is more the coordination between chapters. So if we want to pass a message about, for example, life interpretation, it's not only communication from ISOC staff to chapter. Or from chapter to ISOC staff, we need to coordinate, to collect the input and the feedback and to provide it back. So that's the first mission. And in the other sense, also some chapters are willing to be more involved. But they don't know how to do. It's the example here we have taken with top three. With encryption, the digital sovereignty and spin internet. And there we can come with. Know the interest and build specific actions to enable. Chapters who better participates to the global internet society committee actions. That's really the way we have understood our mission. Now, if you see differently or, yeah. I understand, we really want to act on this on the request on the chapters and based on the whats and not how they want to do it. What are the what, what are the objectives? How can we support between chapters and also liaise with ISOC staff and Board of Trustees? It answer your question? I don't hear anything.
Yes, 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 yes. You answered the question, but I have in the head this level of participation. And I'm trying to match it, the something that we heard from the, from the chapters. I don't know where the, that they were, they were saying, they were asked that the use the check to bring their proposals to the board. And they said, well, the, actually the check is not very useful. Because they, they only meet sometimes in the year and they do it for very limited time. So I, I'm not asking for, for how to do it, as you say. But the, what we should be thinking or how to organize that communication problem? In ways to be solved in a productive way for the chat members and for the chapters, right? But we don't have the solution now. It's just an invitation to think from the check. How to organize the chapters and say, well, how do you want to communicate? Let's work on these tools to be, to be communicated as you were doing with the chapters participation in ITU. Activities with, which I found very interesting, the way they got information from ISOC. And the way they provided feedback to be taken into the WTSA or WTDC, right? Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have a question?
Don't have a question, but I just want to confirm. So if I understood your original question, you want to know is the check there to primarily provide a method? By which communication occurs? Or are they a vehicle by which that communication occurs? Did I understand your original question? And then from your, and then your comment later on, seems like you have a preference that they should be working on the method by which communication works. And that's the key thing you seem to be most focused on. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, we cannot come, not even Charles now can come and say, well, this is the way the chapters are going to communicate with the rest of the organization. Because this is not the way ISOC works. So the chapters were saying or were told that the check was a vehicle. Yes, but the, we heard from Charles, they are not ready to do that. So they, I think the proper place to develop this method of communication should be the check. While working with the chapters, as they show us that some of the initiatives have been successful. And that is the example of ITU, yes, work around the policy. So maybe they can work that, but the, it's something to keep in mind. Merci, Charles.
Yeah, but it's true, we have only volunteers on other free time. And maybe we need more support to be more effective, more productive. That's, that's a good point, yeah.
Also, do you have a question?
Yes, I, hi, thank you. I was looking at the, your description about some of the work you were doing with the UN ITU. Advocacy or discussion within the chapters and also digital sovereignty and so on. Now, I just wondering, because we, this morning, we also heard about some of the topics being mentioned in the action plan. Are we talking about the same things or how are you coordinating between the work with the check and with the, with the staff? Action planned or not?
But it's also part of the survey, it's to know really. From the chapters, do they really clearly understand the action plan of ISOC and how they are engaged in this action plan? It's also part of the question of the survey, to see if we have a two different worlds. Or if we are really together and if we are not enough together, what can we improve and then how?
Well, I think that's very good, but it was actually, you know, considering that I was looking at the, the group's name, you know, it's advisory committee. But it to me, it seems like this is a little bit more than just advisory, you're actually doing work that is helping with the. With the action plan of the, of ISOC. So, so I, I mean, it's good that this is happening, but at the same time. I don't know whether it's in the same, along the same line as what Louise is asking. How much are we, can we, should we, should we or should we not expect the advisory committee to, to, to? To focus more on advising how we can build a stronger relationship with the chapters? I mean, I mean, certainly working on some of these topics might be conducive to the same goals. But, yeah.
For example, I can answer to your question, how to advise, to have better collaboration with chapters is keeping simple and stupid. If we see the ITU, the discussion is too complex for chapters. And if they want to onboard, they cannot because they're discovering a document of, of, of many pages with many topics. And it's too complex and they're just, okay, it's too much for me and they do nothing. And then we have a pool in involvement of chapters. And our advice here is to come with a simple onboarding process and select three key topics for chapters. So they can really onboard easier and, and then gradually improve the work with the chapters. That's our advice here. Put an onboarding process to help chapters to onboard easily on topics and not start with documents of about hundreds of pages. With many different and complex things and people don't know, okay, what I need to do as chapters to approach my local government. to approach my local government based on the the issues matrix, for example. They don't have any idea.
Sorry, so one last comment, because I I was just, you know, thinking about, for example, when Ruben was here and talking about some of the issues that he seemed to have with chapter communication with the headquarter and so on, you know, I I and then my one of my question would be, if I were him, would I come to the Advisory Committee first? Or 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 seek help? For most chapters, apparently, they don't do that. Should or shouldn't he not as a chapter to do that?
If you don't mind, I think we could talk about this for a long time and we are somewhat behind schedule. So I'm going to thank Charles for coming to talk to us today and hand the mic back to Ted for the next session.
Thank you very much for your time today. We appreciate the report and we look forward to working with Jack as you work through the issues that were discussed today and the projects you you have listed. Thanks again.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna ask Kevin, Kevin, has Mohammed rejoined us?
No, I do not see Mohammed. But here he is, he is there. Mohammed, can you hear us?
Yes, Kevin, I can hear you. Can you hear me? And am I understandable?
Yes, you are now.
Actually, I have a power outage and I am hoping that at the top of the hour it will correct itself and I would have my wifi internet back. Currently, I am connected on my mobile data, so if I am fine, we can go ahead with the agenda. Otherwise, we can take a short break and start perhaps at the top of the hour.
Let's let's take a short break. Let's start five minutes after the hour, just to give you a little bit of time in case the there's a mismatch there. That means we would back in in eleven minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Ted.
Thank you, and we'll see you again in in just a few minutes.
How are you, by the way?
Okay.
Mohammed, we're ready for you to start as we are now on the topic of the ISO accessibility framework, which was sent to us from the standing group.
Yes, thank you, Ted. Actually, it I I have actually less to say and more to hear from my fellow colleagues that what I love a couple of ones to is in the beginning, I had to accessibility, digital accessibility or disability for people with disabilities. Chapter one or two accessibility back in the nineteen after the chapter on accessibility and disability was dechartered due to the new SIG strategy. And in two thousand twenty-two, once again, it was dechartered in twenty-one and twenty-two, reformed as Accessibility Special Interest Group. My purpose to coming to board with the proposal with regards to ISO policy per person with disability is that there have been a lot of work. But this work has mainly remained to some actions and some of the frameworks into into ISO systems with regard to employment, some specific tools. Mainly, it has been that there were issues and when it was pointed out that this is the issue, staff or some other community members, they come together to to resolve the issue. The purpose of this policy should be that if there is there should be a policy that should be guiding the Internet Society about the different issues as they come in front of the Internet Society. Instead of when the issue arises, the the site in that to ever in or accessible to see a test. Guidelines. So we need and double well, funny or that possible that there are others which are doing some work on person with disabilities. So this work needs to be bring together under a single umbrella which would at this point be the Accessibility Standing Group. But this work should also be driven by the action point, the the and the larger strategy of the Internet Society. The ultimate objective here is to make the Internet accessible for people with disabilities. If the some chapter wants to start some city wants to start, for instance, to make Internet equally accessible and affordable, because when we talk about the availability of the Internet, it's not just the the cost that is that people incur on devices. It's also the cost incurred for people with disabilities in certain cases that they they used or incur to access through those devices to the Internet. For instance, the availability of screen readers or availability of accessible devices in in certain areas. This work cannot just fall in the domain of the Internet Society. That's why I say we need to define our limits. And we also need to define the the extent to which Internet Society would go, but there has to be some extent. Because when we say Internet is for everyone, people with disabilities form a very considerable part of everyone, about fifteen percent of global population. And if we do not consider while formulating our our policies or implementing our strategies, while formulating our plans, we are effectively ignoring this fifteen percent of world population, which as a as a global society, I would say we cannot do. So I will stop here and if there are any discussions, we can move forward on that.
Thank you. I appreciate you're taking the time to go through that. And I appreciate the ISO accessibility framework, which was previously shared with the board. To remind folks on the board, there are really two high level goals of the ISO accessibility framework. Building a culture of accessibility and ensuring minimal barriers to participation and engagement with ISO processes and practices. And I think as we start the discussion, it's important for us to consider first, what barriers to participation and engagement with the mission there may be? So there there's definitely, how do we make sure that people with disability can join us in in the mission of ISO? And then there's a second part, how can the mission of ISO serve those with specific disabilities? And so as we as we start the discussion, maybe we want to take those as two different topics that relate to how ISO and people with disabilities relate to the mission. So why don't we take the first topic then of the minimal barriers to participation and engagement? Which is really, how do we make sure that people with specific disabilities are able to to work with us on the mission? Any thoughts from the board?
Now, I I would take this Ted and to to my understanding, both topics, though these are two topics, but to my understanding, they come together on a single framework, which I am proposing is here is that Internet Society needs to have a DNA on accessibility. So currently, what is happening? What is happening is that there comes a person with disability or someone telling Internet Society that this is the problem in your system. And Internet Society is saying what is and remove this in the system as well as inculcate a culture of accessibility within the organization? That the organization should have certain minimal standards set for itself, lying down the principles that this is what should be ensured in the planning of and execution of Internet Society activities. Now, I do understand that not every activity that Internet Society runs should have the accessibility provisions for person with disabilities because it's not just the the purpose of Internet Society is not just for for to serve as an organization of people with disabilities. It has a larger perspective as well. But certainly, there should be someone or or an expert in the society who should be examining our plan and activities and the execution that are we or we are not fulfilling and TV fulfilling.
So Mohammed, you we lost audio for you and and let me just do a quick reply. I I note that you're saying that you believe that this should be part of the DNA of of the Internet Society. But what I want to point out is that what we're measuring is actually quite different for the two different questions. So for the first question of how how minimal are the barriers to participation and engagement with ISO? We would measure that by looking at the the mechanisms by which ISO interacts with its members to make sure that they meet specific accessibility goals and that they can be measured against particular targets for accessibility. And we would measure them basically by saying, anybody with a screen reader can get through this. And there there's no, there's no hindrance or there's a particular level of accessibility guideline which we're meeting. And we can set that and and make a target to meet that. And that's how we would measure that question's impact. Have we have we met or not met our goals there would be measured that way? For something which is an external program designed to help people with disabilities, it would be measured completely differently. And even if we were still talking about screen readers, we might say there is a fundamental economic barrier to the use of the Internet because screen readers are expensive. And therefore, we want to work with somebody, maybe to propose something to the foundation as a as a grant for the development of a software screen reader or a low cost screen reader or one that works with lower cost components. And we would measure the success of that program completely differently because it wouldn't be based on our own communication, but on the number of lives outside of our membership that were impacted. So I think we really do need to be clear. We may want to do both, I I don't deny that. But what I want us to be clear on is how do we set this up? Not just as a a set of desires to to serve the community well, but a set of goals that we can measure ourselves against. Because if we don't do that, it'll be very difficult to know whether we're making progress on either of those two questions. Charles?
Yes, thank you, Ted. I think your explanation helped, at least helped me understand a lot more about what the board is considering when we face this issue of, you know, how can we improve accessibility as a whole? My idea of hearing what Mohammed has been saying is that I think he is focusing a little bit more on the first question of making sure that the services and the resources that ISO provides to the public and chapters and so on is keeping up to a significant or high enough standard of accessibility that 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 is acceptable or should be expected from an organization like ISO. And if that is not yet the case, oh, okay, actually, your question about finding a way to 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 measure is very important because I that one of the problem might be that we don't have a good measurement as to where we are or or we haven't seen that particular measurement or result. And that's why I think we're discussing this. So so coming up with that measurement is that and if we haven't come up with that measurement, is it because of resources? Is it because of not exactly knowing where we, you know, how to measure or whatever? So I think I I think that is what we are trying to, what we what we need to understand first.
So Laura, and then then I I believe we're not starting from from ground zero here and we probably want to ask Andrew to to give us a sense of where the the current activities are. Let's do Laura, Andrew and and then Louise and then Victor, were you in queue? Okay.
Um, I was gonna say that I think one of these is partially dependent on the other, which is that I feel that ensuring minimal barriers has to come first. And part of the reason for that is we need to make it easy for people with disabilities to be involved in ISO because, you know, there is a saying, disability, well, nothing about us without us. And if it's hard for people to participate, then it's gonna be harder to build out the other programs.
Thank you, Andrew.
Well, so so it I I I've heard what Mohammed is saying that the Internet Society is reactive in in terms of somebody reporting a problem and then doing something about that. And and I recognize that that is probably historically true. But I'm not, I'm not actually, I I don't think that I can agree that that is in fact what the Internet Society's staff function is doing now. So we've been using you know, conformance against various web accessibility guidelines in purchasing decisions over the last year or so. The problem, of course, is that none of that stuff is shipped yet, like it hasn't landed, right? But I I mean, I we're not going to invest more money, for instance, in in doing anything about MemberNova because we're replacing that platform. And so the the efforts, you you don't see them yet. Similarly, there's a fairly significant chunk of the of the style guide that is about this topic and requires audio description. When you've got a video, it requires alternative formats, it requires it requires it always. All videos have to have closed captioning, images have to have all tags. There are a whole bunch of rules about PDFs. There's a whole bunch of rules about plain language and structure and and so forth. So and and all of these, all of these are here in an effort to try to try to make sure that we are providing the necessary support. that we are providing the necessary support. The the tools portion of the style guide refers espec- especially to the standing group toolkit and and, you know, refers people off to that in order to do validation of this. And this has become a standard practice in our communications materials and so forth. So I I certainly accept the criticism that historically the internet society staff seemed always to be only reactive to this. It is nevertheless the case that we've adopted a number of policies over the past twelve to twenty four months that have been an attempt to to address this. And so if there is a desire for some framework here, beyond that, I don't know what it is. And and it's it's not clear to me what that is, so I'd I'd like some clear direction from the board on it.
So Louise is next.
Thanks. As far as I remember, and I need Mohammed to confirm, he was speaking for some time about UN framework regarding disabilities. Yes, as a policy for the whole organization, not just focusing on the digital means in the digital assets. The because obviously that has a very, or there are a number of frameworks that may guide the design of the website and the tools to be used and the requirements. But in the beginning, as far as I remember, this discussion started as a whole organization policy. And that needed a more complex framework because, and as you say, Andrew, the the we need some light regarding what is applicable in terms of the to be an inclusive professional society. Yes, but I need some light by Mohammed. Thank you.
Yes, thanks to Louise and and Laura. Things except the years have been, that's why. See, the last twenty twelve years been doing. At a level in the discussion and how the discussions with the leadership of standing group, the work has started to go in the direction that it should go. But prior to that, there there have been a lot of good work. And the toolkit that Andrew mentioned is is the best example of the prior work that was done under the umbrella of the accessibility and disability. This PP fifteen, if I, I, you know, the Nella is the. And says that we need, can I? Third, I think in that we the our our must go, I would represent if want to build a new website, you would have to set a standard that which to which level of WCAG web content accessibility guidelines two point one, which are the latest standards of accessibility with regards to the websites and digital content. You would make your content and design accessible. Single A would be the least accessible and triple A would be the utmost accessibility. Most of the double A of it, if I were to sort of that it would make its detail tools and website able to easier for us and for any other person to check whether the ISO websites and digital content were accessible to a level of double A standards or not. If there were any other fixes to make, they could be made. But if if you not just say that it would be something that meant.
Mohammed, we've once again kind of reached the point where your audio has has started stretching and and breaking. So I'm gonna ask you to mute yourself for a moment to break the audio connection and then to try again, because sometimes that will restart the 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 connection to Zoom. So if you could pause your audio for fifteen, twenty seconds and then restart, let's see if that gets us a new context or not.
Yes, am I audible now?
That's a little bit better. Thank you.
So I would just quickly sum up. So I I agree with what Louise says that I I thought oh. Society by year that physical can accessible. And I thought I thought at that point to to get that. So this, this is what I want. Perhaps I am, I'm not being clear on that. And I think it's it's somewhat clear for people if if you were able to hear me.
So you you came back to clarity at the very end when you were asking whether we could hear you. But it was in fact a bit difficult. So let let me try and bring the 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 board back into the discussion a little bit and and ask folks on the board. If we want to take Laura's point of view, that the first thing we need to do here is to make sure that the work of the society is accessible enough so that we meet that rough test of nothing about us without us. And although we will continue to to offer programming that's accessible, any specific programming directed at this at this problem will continue on its path, but not get additional emphasis while we consider the first question. Is that a fair result of this initial discussion? Obviously, there's no resolution here today, just a discussion.
Am I audible?
You are again.
Okay, so Laura's point, I'm sorry, I forgot to address that. To some extent, we we are already doing that. For instance, the the standing group on accessibility is consisting of people with disabilities. What we need to do is, and and that is for the standing group on accessibility, people and leadership to think about. It 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 should not be the concern of the ISO board and leadership. Of course, we can, we can provide them with the resources, but they need to bring more people with disabilities on board. I know there are number of people with disabilities in the of ISO disability. Who are in it is, he some is not general. So the standing group needs to enhance its membership onto Laura's mind. So we 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 have started there, but we need to improve on that. Am I still being here, being heard there?
Once again, we we could hear some of it, but not not all of it.
My apologies for that.
No, it's 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 just where we happen to be. So I want to go back to to the point I think I heard you make, which was we have, we have started down this path and there's been a good bit of work that Andrew shared with the board on improving both the accessibility standards and in the purchasing standards, making sure that the things that we're we're bringing on board, say, to replace MemberNova have appropriate accessibility goals and frameworks. He also noted in in the in the chat that the that signed a contract with a consultancy on inclusion work and one that has nonprofit global experience. Obviously, we'll have to see whether that particular consultancy brings enough experience to the table to to improve matters. But I think the bigger point is to continue to work with the membership that we already have to making sure that the accessibility and inclusion of what we're developing is meeting their needs and extending beyond them as much as we can. I do want to be sensitive to this question of how do we measure? Because it it's very easy to put out a statement that says you support X and then do nothing. And this is not, it's kind of almost worse than useless because you're setting up an expectation and not meeting it. So I think what we may want to is to make sure as we go through the action plans and other things that we understand the extent to which the programs that are being developed, for example, the trainings, et cetera, would be accessible and that we focus on how the measurements are being done. Because I think, you know, we need to make sure that when we make a commitment to the community, that we make a commitment that we can then demonstrate to the community how well or how poorly we were able to deliver. Does that make sense? Okay. We we are beginning to run a little bit past time, but I don't want to close this too abruptly. Louise, it looked like you had an additional point? No, Victor?
So if I understood that, the focus now will be efforts we already started. It's focused on the output of ISO training materials, things for the community, it being accessible and to the community at large. That's the initial focus area. Does that, is that a fair enough as opposed to the actual ISO employee base, which might be a different goal, maybe it's aligned, maybe it's not. So I just wanna make sure I understood where that that first.
Right, and the the point of that is then we can grow the non-employee, the the volunteer base of the society to include more people with different challenges and therefore have their experience to guide us both in how we continue to improve ISO and how we then might create additional programs to serve people with disabilities as specific programs. Clearly, they're part of other programs because of intersectionality, but that would be the the kind of order of operations as as I believe might make sense.
Yeah, and I I think that makes sense in that going back to Mohammed's point is that would build, the most controllable part is the one you do first. You learn from that, you understand what works, what doesn't work. We use that as experience for the body to then figure out what are the next set of goals and you work outward for there and that kind of goes towards the building the DNA, right? Is that, anyway, maybe I put it together correctly.
Yeah, in my point of view, that's what Mohammed is asking because in Sri Lanka, we do the pilot program on accessible internet, accessible webpages. So most of the people, they requested on accessible like with the accessibility tools on the webpages. So we have been training thirty government web developers to create the accessible websites. So we were planning to like spread that into all over the world, like what we did was a pilot program. So we want to make it away from the other regions of the world as well. So that's what Mohammed Mohammed is asking. So with my experience all over the world, PPWDs, the first request is accessible websites. So so if we are, if we can have a strategy to address that issue, then we will be able to move on with the what they request.
Thank you. And Louise?
Yes, just a final thought. The we cannot think of inclusion in any sense. If we don't think about the whole organization, imagine we cannot have a accessible website for the information ISO shares and having a non-accessible services inside the offices in 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 the US or in Switzerland. Yes, you you need to be consistent and have a whole thinking, which is very complex in this sort of organization because we're talking in a global organization, nonprofit, with not clear frameworks. The and essentially, we're this is our chance to take the leadership in how people think of the digital future of people. Yes, because as ITU in particular, they say, well, now people with disabilities is growing up. Yes, and nobody is incorporating policies in their operations according to that part of the future. So that may be our chance to take some leadership and make a positive change in similar organizations. Thank you.
In my point of view, what we thought was as an initial group, so in the policymaking process, we should include these people with disabilities. So otherwise, normal people, they won't feel what are difficulties they are facing, especially in the internet arena. So so that's what we have to do. We have to make initiatives on that. Then only we can move ahead with what they really request.
Thank you. And and channeling Mohammed's comment from the the chat, measurement should be done by following standards. I think we all agree that that's the case. Let me thank the accessibility standing group and Mohammed for bringing the topic to the board. As as you know, there was no resolution required, but I feel that we've come to a a better understanding. And I appreciate the efforts that went into it. Our next topic is in closed executive session, so I will ask the visitors to the to either the Zoom session or locally to to go ahead and and leave us to the executive session.